Today for our regularly scheduled business meeting here at the City Council. And to start our meeting today, we have Doyle Quarter here with Southwest Church of Christ to say our invocation. Mr. Quarter?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, another day to see you and love you. We thank you for the opportunities that we get to serve you in this community. We thank you for this city and all the things that it means to us. We pray for this city. We pray for protection and we pray for your leadership as we, as leaders and as citizens, make this city what it is. We pray for the children of this city, for protection, that they will live in a place full of joy and peace, that they will be able to see you daily. We pray for peace among our children. Father, I pray for these council members and leaders of this city and the mayor. I pray for wisdom from you, Father. I pray that you give them wisdom and listening ears and listening to your spirit as they make decisions for this city. I pray that they make bold decisions when needed to lead us to places where you want us, Father. I pray for protection over this time, this proceeding, and that your hand will be in all of it. It's through the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Will you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several proclamations today. We're going to start a little bit out of order with the 135th anniversary of Potter County and the city of Amarillo. And I want to welcome up guests that are here. I know we have Judge Nancy Tanner and IC Commissioner Alfonso Vaughn here with us from Potter County. I know Wes Reeves and other members of the Historical Society are with us today. So if you would like to join us as we read this proclamation, we would be honored to have you here. Councilmember Howard Smith is going to read our proclamation. Mr. Smith?
Y'all come join us up here. You did not have to have remembered the first time this was formed to be up here. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas originally called the night of the city of Amarillo was established by election on August 30th, 1887. At the same time, it was selected as a county seat for the newly organized Potter County. And whereas in 1890, the population of Potter County was less than 900, but by 1910, the county and city had grown to a combined total of over 12,000 residents. And whereas both Potter County and the city of Amarillo continue to be on the leading edge of innovation and industry, attracting many businesses with friendly natives, ample space, and strong transportation infrastructure. And whereas with a rich and diverse history, Amarillo, along with Potter County, have become an important business, medical, and travel hub for not only the citizens, but also the visitors to the region. Now therefore, we mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo to hereby proclaim 2022 as the 135th anniversary of the organization of Potter County and the establishment of the city of Amarillo. And remind all citizens to carry forward the spirit of the frontier held by our founders, given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of September 2022, signed by Ginger Nelson, Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and myself. So who's going to be the spokesperson here?
Judge?
What do you want me to be the spokesperson?
You're limited to 30 minutes.
Thirty minutes, huh?
Thank you, everybody. I would like to read a story. I always have a story. I got this, a book was given to me when I first became judge by a friend of mine. It's the history of Potter County. And it has the funniest stories in it. And they apparently, they apparently took notes when they, when they would just be in a saloon or whatever, they just took notes and then someone wrote a book based on those notes that they took. So the way they talk is the funniest part. So I'm going to read this little small, it'll take about two minutes.
Is that okay, Howard?
They said that, they said that Potter County was created in 1876 and was organized 11 years later in 1887. Obviously, there were no women involved. It was been done in about 11 days. So just saying. On January, on January 10th, 1889, in the back room of a saloon adjacent to the Tremont Hotel, Sheriff Gober, it may be Gober, I'm going to go with Gober, Gober, who was married to Belle Helen Plemmons, the daughter of the very first Potter County Judge WB Plemmons, shot and killed Constable MM Givens. The constable, I'm not smiling because of that. I'm just thinking it's a funny story. Sorry. The constable came to the saloon to arrest a couple of no goods who it was rumored to have been gambling. The couple of gamblers protested, saying, "We ain't going nowhere because we ain't got any money to pay the fine." The constable was teased about letting other shady characters get away with it. The constable said he'd had enough of their angry outbursts and was there to arrest them anyway. The gamblers demanded to know, "Who told you we'd been gambling?" And he says, "None your business and hush up." So that tells you somebody was right there with it, taking notes. Sheriff Gober walked in and the whole room started talking about what was about to happen. The crowd started joking about the constable and the constable put his hand on his pistol and walked out of the saloon into the street and told those who followed, "If you have anything against me, you better quit your monkey business and turn your dogs loose." I have no idea what that means. But one of the men in the saloon said to the constable, "If I have anything, if I have said anything and you don't like and lay off your gun, I will whip you on half the ground you're standing on." Just half, just half the ground. The constable did not lay down his gun and did in fact point it at one of the men in the saloon. Sheriff Gober, Gober saw this and asked the constable to hold up. He drew his gun and fired one shot, killing the constable. Days later, the sheriff was in front of the district attorney and pleaded his case, saying that it was an accident. He had a trial by jury and was found not guilty, but was removed from office anyway. A few things are the same now. There are still shootings in the street, unfortunately, but you can't get a jury trial in a very, very, very long time. So with that said, a toast to commemorate the 135th birthday of Potter County in Amarillo. Here's to the pioneers who braved the elements, the dangers, the unknown, and took a chance on not only settling here, but they also built homes, banks, churches, and even courthouses. But more importantly, a future for their families and all the families to come. Happy birthday.
Thank you. (Applause) Okay, next, we're going to do the Walk to End Alzheimer's proclamation. So if you're here today, I see your purple shirts. Don't be shy about coming up to stand with us and to get this message out in our city. Mayor Pro Tim Frida Powell is going to read this proclamation.
So good afternoon, everyone. So I'm here to read the proclamation for Alzheimer's. Whereas approximately 390,000 Texans of all ages are living with Alzheimer's disease. And whereas addressing the heart, the burden of Alzheimer's disease must not only rest on those with and caring for people with Alzheimer's, but on the entire community to better support those diagnosed and their caregivers. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the leading voluntary health organization in Alzheimer's care, support, and research. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association addresses the crisis by providing education and support to those who face dementia and Alzheimer's every day while advancing critical research towards methods of treatment, prevention, and ultimately a cure. Now therefore, we mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas do hereby proclaim September 24th, 2022, as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day and urge all citizens to join with the Alzheimer's Association in raising awareness and fighting against this disease, given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of September 2022, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, council members Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Dr. Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And so what I would say before I present this to our former mayor Deborah McCart, I would like to say that I, I certainly pray and hope that as we go forward, that we will remember to treat everyone that we see with, with respect and care for them because you do not know what they're going through. And if you're, if you are an Alzheimer's victim, to sort of speak, you do not remember days. You only remember moments. So we need to be kind to one another, to everyone that you come in contact with, and just try to be respectful and help each other. So with that said, I'm going to present this to the Honorable Mayor Deborah McCart.
Thank you. Thank you, Frida.
And also with us is Kristi Bernalino.
Yes. Actually, we're going to, I'm going to turn this over to Amika Mobley, our executive director. And I have been involved with this project for a long time. My mother and my aunt suffered with Alzheimer's and I know what a terrible thing it can be, not only for the patient, but for the family as well. And Amika will tell you that it's just growing every day and getting, the patients are getting younger and younger. So we've got to find an end to this, this terrible illness. So thank you so much for the proclamation. Appreciate it so much.
So we know that 50% of all Americans are now impacted by Alzheimer's disease in some way. So that's you. That's half of the room is now being impacted. So I, when I began this job, I went after the two biggest dogs that I could find in the fight. So Deborah McCart, whose mother died from Alzheimer's disease, and Kristi Bertolino, whose father had young onset Alzheimer's and is still living. He was diagnosed at 58. Is that correct? So it is very prevalent in our community. It is not senility. It is time for the world to step up and stand and hold hands. And that is the only way that we are ever going to impact this disease. So we are here today to take this proclamation, but more importantly, to tell you that next Saturday, the 24th, we will be walking together at Hodge Town. 9:00 AM, the doors will open. And any of you that are impacted by that disease should be standing there with us. It is just a mile walk. And then we're going to take a giant picture of all of us together and make sure that our voices are heard. We really appreciate it.
(Applause)
Going down like...
I got a plan. I was wondering if we could have those of you that are sitting out here that are affected in some way with Alzheimer's or dementia. If you could just raise your hand. I know I have been. I mean, my gosh, look at that, guys. We have about a long way to go and a little time to get there. Thank y'all so much. Come walk with us on the 24th. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, our next proclamation is for Constitution Week. And Dr. Eddie Sauer is going to read that for us. And I know that some of you are here with the Daughters of the American Revolution to help us celebrate and promote awareness on that. So we would love it if you would step up and join us while that's read.
Okay, so it's interesting that we have Daughters of the American Revolution here to represent us for Constitution Week. My wife is actually a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And I think it's a very important thing that you actually have your history traced back and you find out that she has a relative in her far past that actually served with George Washington. And so it's kind of a pretty cool thing. So hopefully, my daughters are following suit. I know it takes a little bit to make for sure you get all of that done. But I appreciate the Daughters of the American Revolution continuing to keep us connected to the very founding of our country. So here's the proclamation. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessing of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the constitution in order to support it, preserve it, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas the 234th anniversary of the signing of the constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and recall achievements of our founders and to reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship, as well as its attendant responsibilities. And whereas the independence guaranteed to the American people by the constitution should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week, which is September the 17th through the 23rd, as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with public law 915. Now therefore, we mayor and council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in Amarillo. And the Molly Goodnight chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution urges all citizens to pay special attention during this week to our federal constitution and the advantage of American citizenship, given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of September, Mayor Ginger Nelson, council member Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And so Sherri?
The microphone is yours, Sherri.
Oh, thank you very much for this. This is a very, very important thing that I think we throw aside. And one thing about the Daughters of the American Revolution, so many people think that it is an American thing. But when you think of what countries and what people actually helped us to get our freedom, we have the French, we have the Houssians, we have people from all over the world. The only qualification for being a daughter or a son of the American Revolution is to have had a patriot fight in the Revolutionary War. So it's not just a United States thing. It is an international thing. And there are chapters of the Daughters all around. So I am very pleased to accept this on behalf of the Molly Goodnight chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, also for Esther McRoy, which is the other Daughters of the American Revolution chapter, and also for the Panhandle chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. We can't leave those guys out because they beat us to forming a chap, I mean, an organization. So we, we came off of them. So I would like to introduce, I am the regent of Molly Goodnight, and then Jody Drake, I almost forgot who you were. Jody Drake is our very important registrar. She's the ones that will contact the people who are very interested and help them to become a daughter. And then our recording secretary is Marion Garret Schreuter. So without these ladies, it would just be impossible to have a chapter because it takes everybody, just not one person. So anyway, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, and then our last proclamation this afternoon is for National Cleanup Day. And I know we have friends from Keep Amarillo Clean here with us. If y'all want to come and stand with us, we would be honored to have you do that. And anyone else who's working on or wanting to promote our National Cleanup Day, you're welcome to come up here as well. Councilmember Cole Stanley will be reading this proclamation.
So we have Bob G. and Debbie Yellman-Chili up here for the cleanup, Keep Amarillo Clean. And so just to say a few words before I read this, you know, if we're not keeping our community clean, how much pride are we really showing in, in where we live, in our neighborhoods? And so the example that's being set and shown here by these two and others, but specifically by these two, I just want to honor that here today and take that to heart, that we would all see that little piece of trash and we'd pick it up as we walk by it. We're all busy, but we can do our part. So. Whereas National Cleanup Day was founded to celebrate the importance of uniting individuals to care for our outdoor spaces, to remove litter, so our trails, parks, and community spaces remain pleasant and unmarred by waste. And whereas the third Saturday in September celebrates this event by helping to keep the country, connect people, and strengthen the relationships of volunteers and neighborhoods. And whereas the purpose of National Cleanup Day is to assist in promoting a clean outdoors for all by creating a call to action to help mobilize communities to beautify their areas. And whereas, as a national network of stewards of the outdoors, National Cleanup Day is dedicated to keeping our nation's urban, rural, and outdoor public spaces free of litter and trash. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2022, as National Cleanup Day. In Amarillo, and encourage all of our citizens to do their part to keep our beautiful city beautiful, given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day, the Honorable Mayor and the entire council.
My name is Bob G. Yellman-Chili. I started this organization three years ago, but then we got the COVID. I started this organization three years ago, but then we got the COVID plus I have leukemia. I was diagnosed leukemia in last November, so I'm going through the treatments and all that, but nothing is going to slow me down. Today also, I have a chemotherapy this morning before I came here. I went to Japan and then I was a very, very clean country. Then after I come back, you know, there's a lot of trash everywhere. Less wind is a major problem here. So, how do you solve this problem? It's very difficult, actually, you know. But one day, you know, we tried to clean up one area and then it's gone someplace else because of winds. So, that's the problem we're having. Luckily, you know, the school district, the AISD, supported me all the way. So, we have 55 schools, you know, and then the last two weeks, I went to all high schools. I set the tables and see if anybody can sign up. Yeah, I have some positive results. But now, what I'm planning, you know, I talked to all the counselors in the schools. So, they're going to make announcements, and every kid in the high school has to pick up something from their neighborhood and then bring it to the school. So, that's kind of—I'm—you know, it took from me a while because I don't know the system very well, you know, and some of the places you can't even get in, you know. So, luckily, you know, AISD really came to my, you know, thing, and then they're helping me a great deal, actually, you know. So, our goal is to teach the young children and then try to engage the older kids to clean up the neighborhoods. So, I hope we'll have some results this time around, but from next time onwards, I think we'll have better results. I can guarantee that. And I talked to Danny Hooper, and they're asking me if they can provide me any dumpsters, but he said he doesn't have any. I would ask the city council and we'll spend some money and then try to get the private dumpsters and place in the schools, parking lots, because otherwise, you know, they'll be disappointed. I mean, you know, the counselors, you know, because they asked me this morning where they're going to put the dumpster, and I asked him, he doesn't have any. So, it's a problem, so we have to do something about that. I have grand ideas, but in the future, you know, we'll do something, you know, about the litter for the whole country, actually, you know. So, I want to—also, dealing with the whole Panhandle area. So, we have 61 school districts, so I'm communicating with them. I send the flyer to every superintendent. So, we'll have some positive results, you know, along the way, you know. Mayor Ginger Nelson, she supports me all the way, you know.
I know. I'm all about making—the whole council's about making our city more beautiful.
You see, a few months back, I received a Lifetime Achievement Award.
For one thing, I have a soft heart because of what you're going through.
She sent me a beautiful video, and guess what? That is a standing ovation in 1,000 capacitive crowd. I mean, that's really something.
Thank you for what you and Debbie are doing, and we're all of us praying for you, Bob G., we're praying for you, Debbie, and we're sorry for the cancer journey, but we also know there are a lot of blessings that come out of cancer. So, that's what we're praying for.
And in the next few months, you know, I want to go to all the major churches, looking for volunteers, you know. I want to make a big pool of volunteers, like civics and MS civic clubs. Actually, one Rotary Club, I went and, you know, there, and then they're going to send me seven volunteers. You know, that's kind of thing I want, you know, from everybody, you know. And also, you all can be a leader and just take five blocks and, you know, gather a few friends and the neighbors and then just do something about it, you know. It takes everybody to do it because we have a lot of litter, you know. I can tell you that. And we have several problems, not only that, actually. We have a lot of stuff coming out with pickup trucks and trailers because they don't contain them properly. And the dumpsters, you know, at the construction site, they're putting a lot of plastic stuff. They have to put it in bags and then they put in the dumpster before they put the loose sheets, and they're all over the place. That's why you see big, big sheets all over. And there's so many problems. I mean, you know, MS, of course, some people are throwing stuff from the windows, you know. So, there's several—we have to address all those things. So, this—it takes a lot of education, public education, as well as in the schools. So, it takes—it's a whole system has to be changed.
Well, nobody's working harder than you and Debbie. Debbie, come and stand with us. We'll move the microphone so we can do a picture. Okay. Thank you. item 2D on our agenda. I wanted to give the city secretary a chance to explain that. Stephanie?
Yes, Mayor. Council, you'll notice on item 2D, page 2 of your agenda, it's a consideration of Resolution Number 9-13-22-1. This resolution is approving the legislative agenda that we've talked about previously. What you'll notice on the face of the agenda, we had an error in calling it the 2023-24 Texas Municipal League Legislative Policy. This is actually for the city's legislative agenda. You'll notice if you flip to Tab D in your backup, the cover letter and the resolution and the backup to the resolution, which is our legislative policy that you'll be considering today, are correct.
Thank you, Stephanie. So, council, when we get to that agenda item, we can discuss whether or not you feel comfortable moving forward or whether we need to push that to the next agenda. So, we'll do that when we talk about consent. With that, we'll move on to our public address portion of the agenda, and I will pass the microphone back to our moderator, Ms. Stephanie Coggins, our City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we are glad that you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. Every speaker has three minutes to address council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you will hear a warning beep alerting you, you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts, and we ask that you stay within your three minutes allotted. Speakers are asked to limit your comments to items on today's posted agenda. We do have several public hearings on the agenda today. If you're here to speak on an item that has a public hearing, we would ask that you make your comment either during public address or the public hearing, but not both. This helps us keep accurate records of the meeting, and it's your decision which time you'd like to speak. When you come to the microphone, please state your name, whether or not you live in the Amarillo city limits. Please state if you are speaking for, on, or against the item that you're speaking on, and again, thank you for being here today. We have a total of nine speakers. We'll start with Noah Dawson, and on deck after Mr. Dawson will be Michael Fisher.
How's it going, Noah Dawson? Still living in the city? I'm going to be speaking on 2C and against 2D, 3O and 3P. First, on a 2C, it's kind of a minor thing, but I think it'd be more accurate to put description of my remarks during the public hearing last week as speaking on the item. I was in favor of the direction the rate was going, but if y'all remember, I also did express some deep concerns about the parent process by which we got to that. So, that's just a fairly minor thing. But with regard to 2D, I mean, I myself, when I was scanning through the agenda this weekend, and I saw that it was mentioned, the Texas Municipal League stuff, you know, if I weren't the kind of person that goes through the 300-page agenda packets for each meeting, I probably wouldn't have even noticed that y'all are bringing up the city's legislative priorities. And especially given the comments made at the last regular meeting, which y'all kind of downplayed the importance—or the controversialness, how might I say, of the Texas Municipal League recommendations, I think it is—that makes it pretty clear that it's such a different item that I don't think it would be right to bring it up at this meeting. I know several people who weren't aware that they'll be—that y'all be discussing these taxpayer-funded lobbying things, and these are people who deeply care about that issue in this city. So, to take it up this week—I know y'all have already delayed it, but I don't think it would be right to take it up again this week. And then, with regard to items 3O and 3P, I know it's nothing new for this city, but 3O's price tag is about $1 million more than what Pratt estimates the market value of those properties, and for 3P, that's about $1 million and a half over what Pratt puts the market value of that property. I just don't think that's justifiable.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Next, Mr. Fisher. And I don't believe he's in the room. Michael Fisher? If not, then we will move to Michael Conkling. And on deck after Michael Conkling is Kenneth Natardis.
Thank you for the time today. On Agenda Item 3O, I've been working on that property for about four years. I've got a—
It's okay. Keep going. It's fine if you don't mind, just pulling it a little closer. I'm sorry for the interruption, though.
Restart the timer.
Yeah, well—
Just joking. No, I've got—I've been working on that property for about four years, and I've got a valid mechanic's lien right now for $300,000 on that. So, that needs to be resolved before the city purchases that—purchases the property on grants. That'd be 501, 509, and then 517 South Grant. Kenneth Natardis is my attorney. He's coming up next. He could validate the mechanic's lien on that property. So, that's pretty brief. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conkling, Mr. Natardis, and on deck after—excuse me. On deck after Mr. Natardis is Mr. Skank, James Skank.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Again, as Mike said, I'm just here on his behalf, really primarily in the event that anybody on the city council had any questions. He's put the work into the building. He's obviously entitled to be paid, and we'd like to see him either paid out of closing if—if the motion goes through and the building is purchased, or to let y'all know it's going to have to be taken care of thereafter, whether it's, you know, through him asserting his rights under the lien or working out another transaction or type deal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Natardis. Mr. Skank, and on deck after Mr. Skank will be Kent Meyer.
James Skank, City of Amarillo. I've got a couple of concerns that go on with the running of the business here on the agendas. When we have consent items that range all the way from A through—I mean, we got into double H. And it concerns me that since the last real meeting that you had was on the 16th, and all of these things have been considered by y'all, but it's not been considered in front of us. You have had very little discussion about some of the resolutions that you're going to just vote on today, and we know very little about it. And I do read a lot of today's agenda's 288 pages, trying to find out, you know, just simple things in here about the agreement for services with the Center City, say, for instance, and with the Community Development Director. I've heard we talked about those things. And it just really concerns me how many things that y'all just sweep through without us really getting to hear what you're talking about. I would like to hear some of the budgetary things with the AEDC and the—what's the other ones that are on today? There's so many that participation agreement with Kyle, you know, what are we spending 1.52 million on? I've heard very little—and you know me, I'm here, I'm listening. I try to pay attention. Bother's me because that's not very transparent for us to know what we're talking about. And that's something that concerns me, and I wish y'all would address that to some degree. Bring some of these items out and have a discussion about what we're going to do with electrical surprise contract. And, you know, some of that may be mundane, the city manager, but it's information to us, what we're using that for. Okay. I noticed in that we're going to have the consideration of the PDP meeting, which I was a part of, and I know—I see several of my people that were here with me on that. I don't know what there may be here to speak about, but I'm here to speak with the fact that you have to have a resolve here. You know, there was a—you said you had an 85% commitment from people, but that's that's disingenuous because the last five or six meetings, when we went to the circle meeting, to the tabletop meetings, there was about 14 or 15 people that actually broke it down to whatever mission statement and things that we had. They weren't there, but yet a lot of them signed off. And my question is, how'd they do that? I mean, I couldn't do that with a clear mind. So, anyway, and multiple others couldn't either. So, that needs to be considered when you consider adoption of anything from that particular group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skank. Kent Meyer, and on deck after Mr. Meyer will be Ann Scamahorn.
Good afternoon, Kent Meyer. I live in the city. I'm here to speak on Item 3M, which concerns the PDP Committee. I had the opportunity to serve on that committee. I appreciate that. Councilman Smith invited me, and so I appreciate that opportunity. It was a great learning experience. There was a lot of good people that was on that committee. I probably—there was a lot of smart people in the room, and I was not one of those people. So, I appreciate all the input on that. It's overwhelming. There's a lot of things going on in the city that we dealt with there, and it's just—I really appreciate the time that the staff and the council and the mayor spend on taking care of the business of the of the city because there's a lot to get your head around. So, I appreciate that. I think the thing that we have to remember that this—our situation in the city didn't happen overnight. It's—these things have—the can's been kicked down the road a lot over the last few decades. So, it's—in my opinion, it's time that we take action on this. I mean, and it's going to—it's going to take us a minute to get going on that and get our get our head around all of that. Now, is this is this document that we presented, is that is that perfect? Probably not, but I think it's a step in the right direction that I think that y'all should should consider strongly. Again, in my opinion, it's a step in the— Again, in my opinion, it's a step in the right direction. My hope that is that you will take action sooner than later. It's not going to fix itself. It's going to be painful in areas for a lot of people, but I think it's, it's steps that need to be taken, but it has to be done, and that, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. And as Ms. Scamahorn comes up, Council, I want to point out, she gave us a handout in advance, and so you have that at your places on the dais. And on deck after Ms. Scamahorn will be Cindy Bola.
Good afternoon, Ann Scamahorn. Yes, a resident of Amarillo and Potter County. Happy birthday to us. I am here to speak in support of the council's acceptance of the report submitted previously by Lloyd Brown on behalf of the Partnership for Developmental Progress. It was an honor for me to serve on the mayor's committee to learn that Amarillo, as do many cities, simply does not have sufficient funds to support our infrastructure, including drainage, water, wastewater, and streets. I am very grateful to Kyle Sneeterjohn for the excellent graphs that made it very clear that many current projects are not sufficiently funded, leaving future projects in jeopardy. The mayor has publicly expressed that Amarillo is at a point of historic growth, because first of all, we're in Texas, in the center of the country with a reasonable cost of living and a welcoming culture. I have seen the exploding growth in housing development in South and West Amarillo, creating more infrastructure that eventually will be the city's to maintain. And Councilman Cole, I hope you're a part of this progress. When I previously addressed the council after Lloyd's presentation of our report, I expressed that we had done as the mayor requested in identifying the what. Basically, Amarillo, we have a problem. All of us as professionals never want to present a problem without also presenting a solution. There were suggested solutions that began to come out of our four groups, but I understand that the solution phase is another step in the process. Therefore, I would ask the council to accept our report now, to allow us to take the next step toward determining solutions. As with this PDP Committee, we as citizens had the opportunity to work with consultants who have knowledge and expertise with Amarillo and other cities for these similar problems. The consultants provide us as citizens a broad perspective of situations and solutions. We as citizens then provide the consultants with considerations and recommendations specific to our hometown. I will not try to speak for the PDP Committee, only myself. Our report acknowledges that we do not have an infrastructure funding, that we do have an infrastructure funding problem, and I highly commend the mayor and the council for coming to us as citizens for a solution evidently to a situation that has not been addressed by previous councils. We have to fix this, and we must begin now. We have elected you all to lead us as we embrace opportunities for Amarillo, as well as to meet the challenges that confront us, but our input is the ultimate determination as we, the people. We have presented the what. I would ask that by approving our PDP report, you give us the opportunity to continue to offer guidance to the council for the how, and for the how much, so that we do not effectively give you a blank check. When our mission is complete, it should be we as citizens then who address our fault, our fellow citizens with our solutions, with appropriate support from the staff and professionals. Thank you all so much. God bless Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Scamahorn. Ms. Bola, and on deck after her, our last speaker will be Carol Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is Cindy Bola. I do live in the city, and I did serve on the Partnership for Development Progress, and I am here today to speak in support of the document and recommendations that were submitted to you all. I do want to, I don't want to repeat anything my colleagues have said, those who spoke for me, before me. I absolutely agree with them, including Mr. Skank. James, I appreciate your comments. I do know that that was a hard document for me to sign, because the document on its face may look like the recommendation is that we raise the, the fees on everything because we don't have enough. And ultimately, that may be what happens, but I want my fellow citizens and the council to understand that, that was an eight-month-long learning process that we were subjected to. The partnership collaborators talked and had some very difficult conversations with our staff and with our elected officials throughout that process. And the overarching concern that we have is that we have amassed multiple decades, not years, but decades, of bragging that we had the lowest property tax rate in the state of Texas for a city our size. And in order to maintain that, we've had to rob from here and there in our general revenue funds. And so what we ultimately came up with, the idea was, is that elected officials are under a myriad of issues that are the issues of the day when you're there. And our citizens are most likely to be benefited best when we pay as we go, so that we don't leave these things for our future generations to pay, as we're having to do right now. And if we dedicate funds to specific enterprise funds, and our, what we're saying to you is not raise the prices on everything, although we do know from looking at it, that there are around, by my count, about $700 million worth of infrastructure projects that need attention in the next few years. And so we understand that we will need to pay as we go on those, and our recommendations are to look at those enterprise funds and make those self-sustain. We also are talking about you all taking a look at the feasibility of an enterprise fund for street maintenance and make it pay as it goes, so that those funds can't be moved to a different line item as the whims of the new elected officials in future years come. So we want you to take a look at that and see how feasible it is. We also learned the hard lesson that growth and sprawl will not pay for itself, and so we have to find ways to pay for that growth that are fair to the existing citizens and to those, those new growth developments, and we want you all to explore that as well. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bola. And our last speaker, Carol Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for the Agenda Item Non-Consent M&amp;M. Several years ago, I was asked by then-Councilmember, Mr. Sims, to serve on an infrastructure committee. That was in 2019. Sadly, nothing was done with what the committee proposed. So I would ask you to look at this closely. We spent many months at that time looking at the issues that were before the city, and you will be surprised to know that none of them have gone away. In fact, some of them have multiplied. And so failure to act, failure to do, will only act and make more problems for the city in the future. I know it's not an easy thing to do, but the committee that currently served spent many months, as was just mentioned, looking at what was presented and came up with these proposals. While I was not a member of the committee, I attended many of them committee meetings, and I can tell you that all those members that stood the test, spent many hours dwelling on what was presented to them, and I think they have brought forward the things that you need to hear and need to act on. So I ask you, as a citizen, to please accept these proposals as they are written and to act on them. We do not need to wait another 10 years, because in 10 more years, we don't want to have a Jackson project where the total water system of the city were to fail. It's a possibility. Keep that in mind as you vote, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mrs. Smith, could I just ask a question? What year was that, that you served on that committee?
2013.
2013. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our public address.
Okay. Thank you all very much, and thank you to every citizen that makes time to come and do public address. We appreciate hearing your thoughts. We're always available by email. You can call City Hall, leave a message for us if you don't have our cell phone numbers. And, Mr. City Manager, I wanted to also just ask you to say, if a citizen has a specific question about an agenda item, how can they get more information about that agenda item?
They can always call the City Secretary's office or the City Manager's office, and we will provide feedback, or put them in touch with the city official or the city, city employee that can best answer their question.
Okay. Great. So I want to make sure that every citizen knows that if there's ever anything on the agenda that you have questions about, you can definitely reach out to a council member about that, but you can also call City Hall and directly get information from the, either the City Manager's office or a department head, if you've got a very specific operational question. It's not something the council's going to be able to answer off the top of. We're going to hang up the phone with you, and we're going to dial Jared, and Jared's going to put us in contact with that director. So Phil, I just want you to know that you have the, the access as well to call and get information to any questions that you have about the agenda. Okay. Going back to our agenda, moving on to Item 1A. Anything in your packet, Council, that you want to ask a question about right at the beginning? Okay. Item 2, 1B, is National Cleanup Day. Mr. City Manager, we have a presentation about that?
Yes, ma'am. We have Donnie Hooper, Director of Public Works, to bring us the presentation. He's been working very closely with Bob G. Yalom and Chili and Dr. Yalom and Chili to facilitate this event, but he's also got a lot of experience in, in his own right. So, Donnie?
Thank you so much, Mayor, Council. We are working on National Cleanup Day and have been for about the past couple of months to get ready for our part, at least on that. I just wanted to give you an update on what we're going to be doing, and also kind of get it out to the public of where our, our roll-off containers are going to be in the city. Now, National Cleanup Day is on the 17th, which is Saturday, and our solid waste department has placed 24 roll-offs. Well, I say placed 24 roll-offs, there's five left. They've placed all of them but five. They worked all through the day yesterday placing those, and the last five are going out as we speak right now, all across the city, so that citizens who are wanting to participate in the event, groups that are wanting to participate in the event, will have a place to put their waste as they collect it. We were very successful with this last year. In this event, we collected 72 tons. I say we collected that, the public collected 72 tons, and we hauled it off for them, but our goal this year is 100 tons. We think we can do that. We've had a lot of interest, or people have called us and said, when is National Cleanup Day? What events are taking place? How can we participate? There's a large group in East Ridge, again, that's participating in the cleanup also, so we're looking forward to that. Here's where our locations are going to be at. Downtown Library, we have one roll-off there. We have two at the East Library, two at the North Library, two at the Northwest Library, four at the Southwest Library. We have five at East Ridge School Park. By the way, they had the largest group of participants last year for this event. Four roll-offs at Bones Hook Park, and then four in San Jacinto Park. And then one other note, I wanted to let y'all know about a new partnership that we've started. In fact, we put that together, the final pieces of that partnership last week, and it's with News Channel 10, who actually reached out to us about two months ago and said, hey, we want to help with the issue of illegal dumping. We want to help with the issue of cleaning up our city. And so myself, Jamie Stevens, and also Brent McClure, all the people at Channel 10, got together and said, how can we start to work this out? Well, last week, in a nutshell, what they're going to do, when they revealed to me what their plan was, it's at no cost to us, by the way, which is the beauty of it. They are going to reach out to their listeners, their viewers, and say, what needs to be cleaned up? As viewers submit those requests, they'll get with us, we'll coordinate roll-offs to go to a certain area, specifically to sit there for two weeks, while they have two contractors that are their sponsors at News Channel 10, that will actually come out and help the citizens of that area clean up those alleys and those areas. The reason I bring it up today is because this is really just an extension of National Cleanup Day. We're going to take what we do this weekend. Next week is when we're going to start that program and roll it out, and there's really no end date set in sight for the partnership that we have with News Channel 10. So we appreciate them volunteering to do this. We also get a great PR piece with that. We've asked them to promote our front yard collection program in the process and get the messaging out, because one thing our innovation team has noted is that communication is probably the number one problem that we have when it comes to illegal dumping in our community. So they're going to help us with that, and we've got a lot of good things in the works. So I wanted to just come up and give you a brief update on that, let you know what we're doing for National Cleanup Day. And by the way, we are going to make sure, we've instructed staff on Friday to make sure that all of the dumpsters that are located at the high schools across Amarillo are dumped that day on Friday, so that Saturday, Mr. Yalom and Chili, and his group has a place to put their, their waste. So that's in the works as well.
Any questions for Donnie, Council? Donnie, it's sort of related, when we were at State of the City on Saturday, I know innovation team had a booth set up related to illegal dumping, and they were asking citizens to take a survey, and I just want to give citizens a chance to continue to take that survey if they would like. And I would guess, it's probably on our website somewhere? I took a picture of the sign. It was kind of cute, but basically it said, become a partner in grime. And so they're, they're looking for partners in grime to give them feedback by taking this survey, and of course, there's a QR code there. So look for that if you're interested in giving feedback on making our city more beautiful by fighting against illegal dumping, and give us your feedback on that survey. We would love to hear what your thoughts are on it as, as citizens.
Absolutely. And I went by their booth a couple of times, you know, to see how the survey was going, because I was interested, and people were really participating in it. So I think it's going to give us some really good data to look at. Absolutely. And that team is fun. I mean, these names they come up with, and getting to go to some of their meetings, they're a lot of fun, and they've come up with some really good solutions I think we're going to see just around the corner very soon.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, the most important piece of it is engaging all people in our, in our city, and I love the work that the Yalom and Chili's are doing. And if our city isn't the cleanest it's ever been after this next cleanup, I mean, Bob G.'s working in, coming to do this work in between chemo treatments, I don't know what it would take to engage more people. So thank y'all for the sacrifice that you're making. Donnie, thank you for the partnership that you've built with citizens, many citizens' groups, as they're doing these cleanups. Let's make Amarillo cleaner than it's ever been. Let's do that at, at this cleanup.
Thank you.
Anybody else comment or a question? Okay. Thank you for the work you're doing, Donnie.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 1C is to discuss Center City's update and the city agreement that we have with them. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, we've got Beth Duke here to give us a presentation and answer any questions that we have. This is going to be in reference to the budget that we'll be approving in consent. Beth, take it away.
Thank you so much for having me today. I love telling you all the great things going on in Center City. You know about a lot of them, because I see you at our events. You call me on the phone, we visit, and you're a part of it. The groundbreaking at the Santa Fe Pavilion, all of it, which is so exciting. And I'm here to say thank you, but I'm also here to say we're not done yet. We still have a lot of goals, a lot of things we want to do, because every day, we're trying to make the historic downtown neighborhood everybody's neighborhood. We want everyone to feel included. And some of you who came to Community Market this past summer, you know we had people from every neighborhood, every walk of life, enjoying our downtown. So we had several milestones this year. I promise you, Council members and Mayor, I'm not going to read the whole notebook, but I want you to take it home, if you will, and read through it, because I couldn't be more proud of our volunteer board of directors and all of our volunteers who make everything happen. You know, Center City started in 1996, so we're not exactly an overnight success, but we did not become an official Main Street City until 2002. That's when a group of citizens applied to the Texas Main Street Program of the Texas Historical Commission to be a Main Street City. And I'm so proud that this year, there's a certificate in your notebook, this year we achieved 20 consecutive years of being an accredited national and state Main Street program. And this is so important to me, because it shows that we meet or exceed all the standards they set to be a thriving downtown neighborhood. And I want you to be proud of that, too. Now, I know some people on the council really like numbers. There's a few who really like numbers. Some of you like pictures. There's pictures in there, too. But I want to go back to the end of the year of 2021, just to tell you about the impact you've helped make through Center City. In 2002, in 2021, private investment in the downtown neighborhood topped $43 million. Public investment topped $31 million. And public-private partnerships, which is everything from historic tax credits to facade grants, that topped $30 million. Totally, it was $105,352,954. Totally, it was $105,352,954 reinvested in our downtown. And that shows a big indicator of a neighborhood that's growing. Since we joined the Main Street Program, the total reinvestments in our downtown have topped $639 million. And I couldn't be more proud of that. It's not my money, I'm just the cheerleader, and that's, that's a big part of what I do. When you had the wisdom to start the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone in 2006, the taxable PRAD value was about $139.5 million. And today, it's $269.7 million. And the value, the market value of the tiers is now more than $583 million. And I just think that is, that's a number that, that is so impressive. So, we aren't done yet. And this year, we have nominated the Barfield for a Texas Downtown Award for the Best Historic Restoration. You know, we are proud to bring these awards back to Amarillo. We've won for Hodge Town, we've won for the Best Economic Indicator and several of our other projects. But this year, we believe the Barfield will be our shining star to really put us on the map for Amarillo. So, I want to just flip through just real quickly. We were so privileged to work with Texas Main Street for the Imagine the Possibilities Tour. And this was one day, one Sunday afternoon in May, where our facade grant projects opened their doors and let the community come and see our great work. It's just like going to an open house if Cindy Bula asks you to an open house as a Realtor. But it's exciting because so many times, you see the outside of these projects, but not the inside. And you may not know it, but one of your city staff members, Emily Kohler, helped found downtown TX when she was at Texas Main Street. So, we encourage you to at least look at these projects that we've done this year. The residences, First Bank Southwest Tower, Pergola Shop, the Barfield. On the tour, we're sharpened on Studios, Bracero's with their beautiful new sign, and the Ice Ranch. And then that moves to the facade grant program. Since 1996, the facade grant program that you help support has put back $1.4 million into our downtown. I say we're saving downtown one building at a time. And because these are matching grants, we know the multiplier effect is at least three times that much. So, some of our facade grant projects this year, we helped convert the Paramount sign to LED lighting. It shines more brightly now than it has in years. We helped downtown Women's Center with new exterior paint and facade. And I just want to show you, we look at all different projects throughout downtown and we don't really consider finances, we consider the impact on what it'll have to downtown. So, when you see the new sign at Bracero's or the new sign at the Barfield, I just want you to know, those are partly your dollars at work. We just finished Saturday, our seventh season of Amarillo Community Market. We averaged about 50 vendors every week. We had a tough year with the summer heat and the drought, it really hurt our producers. But we managed to finish up on a strong season and build a lot of entrepreneurs. We were so honored when the mayor included Community Market for her business tour. And it really helped the self-esteem of those entrepreneurs who are taking a hobby and making it into a business. So, we, we had a great season, we had a great first-year fundraiser with the Center City mural run. We had 150 runners, and this was our way to say thank you to the art and the public art, the hoodoo festival, blank spaces, to say, we want to show off the murals. And a fun run with people, their pets, and the serious runners was a great way to do that. So, we finished up Hiningdon on the Square, we had eight concerts. Our next big event is Jazz Tober. We'll have free jazz concerts every Tuesday night right there on the lawn of the Historic Bivens Home. We're planning a traditional electric light parade again this year, now that pandemic has subsided and we can have one safely. And then, of course, we helped sponsor the cattle drive, which made for great photographs all up and down Polk Street. So, one more figure I want to share with you. In 2016, Center City petitioned the Texas Commission on the Arts to become the Amarillo Cultural District. And we were awarded that designation. And because of that designation, there's certain grants the cultural district and the entities within the district can seek. And since we became a district, we have brought back $111,000.5000 to Amarillo through cultural district grants. In addition, with the Texas Rescue Plan, $21,000, and Texas Cares, $10,000. So, we don't want you to think we're just all about numbers, we're all about fun, too. And my, to make you go to all the way back of your notebook, I have this great picture that we took of our Amarillo Police Motorcycle Unit with ruckus at our last electric light parade. And you're my heroes for supporting Center City. You're my heroes for always helping me. And I, Center City would not exist without the teamwork and partnership of this city. And we're very grateful. We will come anytime you call. Thank you.
Any questions for Beth? I mean, yes, don't leave Beth, wait. There, there may be bragging. If not, there will definitely be patting on the back. Very well deserved. Any questions for Beth? I mean, just, it's hard to summarize all of the work. It's, we're flipping through this notebook up here that has just event after event and project after project. But even if you could just look at the numbers that you gave us, it's huge. The financial impact of the work that you and your volunteers and city leaders from previous councils, Mayor McCart, thank you for the vision of supporting this, it's huge. And one number that I wanted to call out is that the change in value, property values, from $139 million to $269 million. So, that change, growth of $130 million in property values in the downtown district. Well, then what does that mean for us from a revenue point of view? That's, that's $500,000 a year in additional revenue that we can put toward police officer salaries, street maintenance, park maintenance. So, it's real and the numbers are getting big as far as seeing the return on the seeds that you planted a long time ago. So, thank you. Thank you, Beth, for the work that you do. That's, that's what I would like to say. Anybody else?
Well, I would just say, you know, every neighborhood needs a champion. And I'm so fortunate that my neighborhood is downtown because I'm fortunate to have a job downtown because my car would come down here anyway. So, thank you for all your help and all, all your teamwork.
Thank you, Beth. We appreciate you very much. Item 1D is to discuss city boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager, anything from staff on that? I have a comment, but...
I, I think the only thing from a staff standpoint on this, Mayor, and then I'll hand it straight back to you, is we just wanted to remind everyone, and Stephanie wanted to remind everyone, that, that the application portal for boards and commissions on the city's website is up and running. And we are accepting applications in preparation for council's appointment process that will take place in November. So, we just want to make sure, and, and we'll also put this out through communications in every avenue that we can to solicit the most applications possible from people interested in serving on boards and commissions for the city of Amarillo. But we just wanted to make sure that people knew that process has started, those portals are open, and we are taking applications. We're going to compile all that, put it into a big folder for you all because it's, it's going to be a big day at a council meeting where you all are going to do a lot of work, evaluating all of these different applications and appointing the good people of Amarillo to serve and help, help you all do everything that you do. Now, I know that you were going to talk about something else, so, Stephanie, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, sir, that's all. And you can visit our website. I think I'm turned on. There we go. You can visit our website under the "How Do I?" section and go to "How Do I Apply for a Board?" and apply there.
And the deadline, again, Stephanie, that will close when?
We will turn off applications on October 15th. And then we will process everything and have some information to council the following week is our goal. And you all will consider the appointments on November 8th.
Okay. Council, I also wanted to make you aware of a really interesting idea that I feel like we need to discuss and give some feedback on with regard to city boards and commissions. We have a young professionals group in our community by the name of Elevate Amarillo. And they are trying very hard. They're about four years old, maybe five years old. And they are trying to get awareness, recruit young leaders in the community, and develop them both in community service and also in leadership training. And one of the things they would like to develop and be known for is a, a board service leadership training. And they would like to ask, would we consider partnering with them, essentially, to say that people who go through their board training, not limited just to their members, but anyone, any citizen who goes through this board training, would then get this certification for having completed their class? And my understanding is that there's not a cost to complete the class. But then they're asking, would we, as the council, set a target? Say, 5% or 10% of the people that we appoint to boards and commissions? Would we be willing to publicly say, we're targeting to have 5% to 10% of our appointments come from people who have had this training? Again, no cost to do the training and, and not a restriction on who can do it. You don't have to be an Elevate Amarillo member. But what they want to do is use this to better equip citizens who are interested in serving on boards. They want to obviously funnel young leaders in the community into board service. But there are those young leaders who feel like they're not qualified. And, or other people, for whatever reason, feel like they're not qualified. So, that's something before, I just felt like we needed to talk about that as a council. Needed your input on it. I don't know that it would be something we would, we're not, if, if we agreed to do it, we would either do it, I think, as a policy or as a resolution. So, again, not something that we are necessarily locked at doing. This is how I would envision it. But something that, as a policy statement, we value that and we might set a percentage target every year for appointing people who had had that training. Now, this would be for coming years because obviously, we're right up on making those appointments. Ideas, thoughts, concerns, questions?
What other organizations would have such a training program for leaders?
I, I don't know of any. That doesn't mean that, yeah, that doesn't mean that...
I can mention one.
Okay.
The Realtor Organization has a leadership training program. There's 1,000 members in that organization. And I, I'm not against what you're suggesting.
Well, and it's what they're asking, but...
That we need to include.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Yeah, there's probably Leadership Amarillo as well. They, they go through a training program. But in regards to what you're saying, I would be okay with doing this from a policy standpoint and say that, you know, like if our target was, was 10% and, you know, like we're shooting for maybe 10 people and we get six, or maybe we get three, I think that would be okay. Because I just want to make sure that the citizens within the Amarillo community that want to serve certainly have that opportunity to serve and that we're not allocate, allocating, you know, board members from just one organization to come in and, you know, take those slots.
And I, I think they're looking for a great messaging point to say, hey, our council sees that it's important to train, intentionally train, young leaders, but all leaders in the community with, you know, what, what's the purpose of a board? I mean, we know, we've done a lot of training. Governance versus operations, that's a big thing, that's a big concept to wrap your arms around. And that's probably a mistake that a lot of members get on a board thinking, well, I'm, I'm here to help you guys do the work. And that's, that's really not the role of a board member. A board member is there to steer the organization and I guess you can come volunteer on your non-board time. But just basic things like that, that would better equip people to serve on these advisory boards. Because if you're on the, if you're on the Parks and Rec Board, you're, you're not actually running the Parks Department. You're advising and helping to steer the Parks Department. So, just the concept of that is a big change from what some people understand.
And I think a lot of our citizens don't realize that until they, until they are on a board. You know, because even as a council, our job is not to run the day-to-day operations of the city because we're set up as a, as a manager council organization. And it's the manager's job to run the day-to-day operations and it's our job to govern. But a lot of citizens don't realize that when they're not actually serving. So, yes, I think it would be great for us to be able to train and educate as many of our young people as we can so that they can come onboard and be our future leaders.
Councilmember Stanley?
I like it. I think you can go forward and backward. So, I think you could take an opportunity, some of our boards are three years, some are two years. I think if we were to pull willing organizations that aspire to train leaders, be it young or, or be it industry-related, like Realtors Association, for us to have a policy that directs that, encourages that. For current board members that sit on boards, they can still go take this training. And then for future board members that, you know, if I knew, hey, I'd like to volunteer next year, here's a way for me to get plugged in. I think that we could recommend, I think that we could promote and encourage. The only thing that I would pull back away from would be having any kind of a benchmark as we pilot this out and, and trying to steer anything to any one typical board or any one typical organization leadership training. Now, as you move forward, I think you're going to get some metrics that you can kind of pull from and you could look back, two, three years from now. But outside of that one little tweak, I, I think it's a good idea. I think training would have been vastly helpful for myself. And I think that other board members are probably confronted when they sit down just in how the meetings are ran, Robert's Rules of Order, and so many basics and principles that these leadership trainings help you with.
What suggestions, then, would you all give to them as far as if you're not, and I don't, I mean, are you saying you're not comfortable saying, hey, we, we would look for a 5% or we would look for? Like, how would you suggest to them to phrase that?
I think that we would, we would phrase it in the way of promote and encourage, you know, kind of the pilot policy moving forward and then be able to review two, three years from now, see what that produces, and then you could have a metric from there versus starting out with a goal that we really don't have a reference point. And all it kind of does for me is it just singles out one entity. And that's all that I would be trying to, to pull back from, just more of an equal opportunity for any leadership training organization to, to partner with the city.
Okay, Mayor, I want to make sure that I heard you correctly, or we're not singling out one entity. Did they come to us with that request?
They did come to us, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make that, I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, they came to us and the ask was for, you know, for council to make a proclamation that, that they would support appointments of five, or I can't remember if they asked for 5% or 10%. Stephanie, do you remember?
They did not put a percentage in there, they just said an appropriate percentage of seats.
I thought, I thought I remembered seeing a number as a benchmark.
If I could elaborate a little bit, these boards and committees are representatives and, and we try to get good representation. And so, we're looking for people that are not only qualified, experienced, but, but also pull from different backgrounds and different expertise. I love the, the fact that, you know, Elevate Amarillo, Leadership Amarillo, different places contribute to that. But it makes the job more difficult of, of trying to put different people in places if we're trying to hit a metric or a benchmark.
Agreed, which is why I think it shouldn't be a binding number. It should just be suggested as something we're mindful of and possibly targeting. Like, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking you guys, so I appreciate this perspective. Because I also know, having been through it five times now, that inevitably, we get down to those last few appointments and one of them is going to be CDBG. down to those last few appointments, and one of them is going to be CDBG. And it has zip code restrictions on it, and so it gets really hard to make some of those appointments. But I think they're not asking for a very high number. And if we took feedback back to them, they might come back with a proposal that says, okay, well, maybe it's not number-related as much as we want the opportunity to have a proclamation with the city council that says you will target people who have had training, and it doesn't just exclusive to their training, but people who are, you know, training for leadership specifically to board service. That's what they wanted, the opportunity to help us with. And in return, I think it helps them actually go out into the community on a talking point to actually recruit those leaders. So they're looking for, it's a very creative idea and a very creative ask, that they're looking to create some synergy between helping us with better-trained board members, but they're also looking in the long game of helping us with people, young people, who are interested in working on city service projects.
I see it as a win-win all the way around.
Okay. So am I hearing a consensus that I should go back to them and say, we really like this idea of partnering with you, the door would be open to partner with other organizations who were doing board training? But maybe not so much a target number? Or what are y'all, what's the consensus with regard to a target number?
I would have a problem with target numbers.
I would too. I think it's really good what they want to do. We had a person appointing to this council, Lisa Blake, is that her name? And she headed a leadership program. And I mentioned the Realtor Organization has a pretty extensive leadership training program, and there's Elevate. So I'd have a trouble targeting a number, but I don't want to discourage them because I think we want the best-trained people on our boards.
I think one of the ways that I would be looking at it more would be if they create this program, and they're doing this program, then when they're putting forth members of this that have completed this, that it would be on their application. And so if someone has got that on their application, or they've got the Realtors way of going through it, or Leadership Amarillo, or any of those others, that that would be something that would move them to the top of our list, that would give, I mean, that's the way it would be for me. I'm going to be looking through these applications, and those would be the people that I would be most inclined to want to put on to that board position if they have completed some of this or that's part of their resume. But to make it a target number, I think that would be a little problematic.
Even if it wasn't a binding number? I'm playing the devil's advocate just for a minute, for a discussion. It does make us more aware if we have a number out there. You said a metric, Cole, which could be any metric. I mean, I'm trying to think about...
To kind of work towards the middle ground here, I think that to encourage and promote is kind of the language that I'd be comfortable with, especially since this is a new, creative idea, and these are leaders. So it's a little bit of a pilot at this point. We could always come back to it. If we thought that what was missing, you know, a year or two from now was a goal, then maybe you said a goal percentage. But for right now, I'd love to just leave it promote and encourage as kind of the verbiage on top of what you'd already laid out.
Hey, can I better do justice by reading the actual request here?
Yes.
Finally found that, got it to load on my phone. "The Executive Board of Elevate Amarillo would like to propose a formalized partnership with the City of Amarillo in which we would provide prepared leaders to serve on various civic boards and committees, so really not even just city boards. Elevate Amarillo is a local nonprofit which through its membership identifies, develops, and supports the next generation of the Panhandles leaders. Through four pillars, leadership, philanthropy, mentorship, and professional development, we provide members a myriad of opportunity to learn, engage, and connect to each other in our community. Among our various programmatic offerings is a board service training seminar, which appropriately prepares those accepted into the training to effectively serve on both nonprofit and civic governance boards. We propose that city council would make a proclamation acknowledging the work of Elevate Amarillo in the community and committing to hold an appropriate percentage of seats for Amarilloans who have completed and approved civic service training program. The details of this designation may need to be further determined based on term lengths and how often these seats become available, among other factors. We believe this arrangement provides valuable access to civic service for our membership as well as a stream of developing leaders for the city to engage." So that's what they're asking us to consider. And what I'm hearing that you would go back to them with is, we like everything except targeting a number.
If I, what I heard was, the part was committing to hold a certain number of seats available. So if we could change that verbiage to, you know...
What are we committing to?
Yeah, well, we wouldn't commit to hold any seats available. It would be my preference, but the partnering, a formalized partnership, no problem with the understanding that we allow other formalized partnerships from other organizations that perform the same. And then just removing the commitment to hold and just say, we'll encourage and promote or we'll consider, because it is a factor. It's skills and training that we would look for.
How's that land down here?
I think that's fine. The city manager made an announcement about the deadline for applying for boards, and that's pretty quick. I think we could go to every organization that has a leadership training program. There's been three mentioned here, and make them aware of these deadlines and encourage them, if they're going to apply for a board, to put it there on their application that they've had training at such and such an organization.
Okay. Eddie, anything to add? Thank you, Howard.
Well, the only other thing that I would add is I think we're also being a little short-sighted about just talking about these specific boards and commissions. I mean, we've had several different committees that have been put together, like take, for example, the PDP Committee. You know, you've got several of those, and so, you know, whenever that time comes and we're appointing for, whether it's like whenever we did the Parks Master Plan and you had a committee looking at that stuff, or the other ones, that would be another place that you would look at targeting these individuals that have got this training and give them that opportunity to step into position. And so I would think that it would be, it just, I would more prefer that it be set into the example of it's the top-of-mind consideration more than a guaranteed consideration.
Y'all like that phrase, top-of-mind consideration? Which might result in more than...
It could.
Targeted number.
It very well could.
Okay.
Mayor, just to put it in perspective, y'all appoint between 55 and 60, 50 to 60 people each November. 10% of that's six, but there's roughly six, depending on the number. But, you know, between Elevate Amarillo, Leadership Canyon Amarillo, Amarillo 101, I think y'all mentioned a couple of others.
Which I think, just to, pardon my interruption, but it's, they're specifically honed in on board service training, not just general leadership training, but this board service training. Like what you were mentioning, Cole, you know, Robert's Rules and how you put an agenda together or whatever that is all going, but it's specific to serving on a board. So, pardon my interruption.
Well, I was just going to say, there's a lot of people to pull from to achieve an aspirational number and a preference, you know, might satisfy that.
Yeah, so based on where the organization is coming from, that's why I didn't really have a problem with the target numbers per se.
Because let's say we do 50 appointments, if we ask, they're asking for two or three people.
Two or three people is all they're really, I mean, that's the way I read it. I mean, you could certainly go back to them, you know, for confirmation, but that's what I'm reading and what you shared with us just now.
All right, well, let's go back to them with the phrase, encourage and promote board training for top-of-mind consideration. And if they, they're creative thinkers, if they can think a way around or a metric that they think is helpful to promote, let's continue the dialogue with them. Good with that? Okay, I think we got a consensus on that. Do we have a consensus to take a bathroom break? Okay, let's do that real quick.
Yes. Do bathroom breaks require seconds?
I can tell you this, I can tell you, I can tell you this for sure, they do not shorten the minutes.
I'm going to give my wife a heart.
They do not shorten the minutes.
You're in for a...[1240.83]
You're in for a...
I'm just looking at Kendra Burris thing.
Sitting right next to the lady that I need to talk to.
I was on my computer right there.
Want your opinion.
Southwest, yes.
Would you drop that on the calendar?
It's a thick one. Okay. What we were talking about a second ago.
Oh, yeah.
That's the most recent thing I have.
Hey, yeah, I'm trying. Why do you think I got this cut?
He will. He will.
How do you get it back?
This is in my contract. Oh, wait, this is gonna sound so like a shinger problem. There's a, that's how you undo type text.
That's what makes it a hairy deal.
Come on.
That's okay. I don't even know what it was.
6017, yes, sir. Hillside.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, it was an outlandish invitation.
Between service, could be for a close, a bank who's trying to get the money, and then, like another potential buyer, we're competing against, and he's already told me, he's gonna, he'll move forward. He brought his lawyer.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Opinion, I'd love to hear.
So, that's good.
Okay. I'll call us back to order, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is 1E. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, we've had a request from at least one taxicab operator to review how we set taxicab rates. And it's been a long time since we have revised taxicab rates, so we wanted to discuss this with you in discussion, and then, and then with the intention of bringing a modification at a future council meeting. So, we've got Andrew Freeman, Assistant City Manager, to present the item and answer any questions council has. Andrew?
Yes, sir. That really covers the, the main highlights. We've been working with Mayor Pro Tem Powell on this. She spoke with one of our taxicab companies. We only actually have a total of four that are currently permitted, but I have reached out and spoken directly with three out of the four, just to get their feedback. As Jared was mentioning, the last update to the taxi fare ordinance, minimum fares was back in 2007, and as you can see on your screen, the way they're written are really minimums and maximums. The only minimum is that they can charge travel from the airport of $10, or the meter fare described, which is a $4.75 per first mile, and then additional 35 cents for additional one-fifth mile. So, you can see, compared to what we're experiencing with the rideshare economy that started with the Ubers and Lifts, taxicabs don't have the same ability as far as fluctuating from their fares as much. They're really restricted by the ordinance that set their rates. So, we have done research on how other cities do this. A lot have different measures in place, whether it's based on gasoline prices, and they can charge more. Some also just allow the taxi companies to, each year as they get their permit, they're able to submit their rates, and that is what we go off of, so they can really set the market at least the maximum that they'd like to see, which I think would put them in a more competitive environment with the, the ridesharing companies. And then reviewing our ordinance, we also have a separate rates and fares for limousine and touring vehicles. Those are on an hourly, pre-arranged basis, but airport shuttles, in particular, they're allowed to set and establish their own defined charges and submit those to the police department when they get their permit. So, what we'd like to suggest, bringing back is an ordinance that basically is more similar to our airport shuttle language. That would just put it in the hands of our taxi companies to bring forth their suggested rates each year, and then, once those are set, they're able to come back at a defined time period and update their chart of fees, and then they're able to really run their business the way they see fit as far as fees, which will allow for some more competition in the market. That's the high level of the request.
Yeah. Questions about that, council?
We just want to make y'all aware, before we brought a ordinance, that this has been discussed, and we've been working on it, and just wanted to get some feedback.
I think this is something we've talked about quite a bit over the last four years or so, but...
So, Andrew, I appreciate all the work and research that you've done on that, and appreciate you working with me, so that, and also the citizen that, you know, that I've been in contact with, so...
Absolutely.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right. We'll bring something back shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Next up on the agenda are updates from council members serving on outside boards and commissions. Item 1F, little I, is Emerald Local Government Corporation. Mr. Stanley?
Yes, ma'am, I'll run with that one. So, we've had a couple meetings since our last update, through which we have discussed and dialogued increasing some rates for the parking garage, and we will finalize all of that and bring it back to you guys, once Laura has it all put together. We're also looking at overall budget and overall feasibilities, and then we are about halfway, I'd say halfway through, with some pretty good planning on some marketing strategies for the retail space that's there, and we won't call them exit strategies, but some other creative ways to utilize what we have over there as an asset, so...
Any previews for us?
No, Howard and I've had a good conversation, and then, we feel like the, the rest of the, the committee and the board are all kind of thinking the same, and, and so, we'll, we'll have one more meeting with LGC, and then be able to bring that back to you with, with some meat on the bone.
Okay. When is the next LGC meeting?
Well, we pushed it, and I want to say, I've got it in the calendar, October, we pushed it from September to October. I'll let you know here.
Okay. All right, you're looking. Howard, anything to add to that?
No, he did a good job.
Okay, great. It's an A+.
Mayor, October 19th.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate that.
She's quicker.
So...
Thanks.
Okay, great. Anything then, Howard, for item F, or any council questions for those two committee members about LGC? Okay, good. Anything on item 1F, little 2I, Environmental Task Force? Mr. Smith?
The Environmental Task Force met on August 17th, and I got three things that we dealt with. I think we showed you a video of mulch don't bag video that has been put on the city's Facebook page since August 10th. We're planning another one, possibly autumn leaf disposal, instead of having so many leaves go to the dump ground, we're probably gonna talk about that. And then number two item, cardboard recycling. We recycle cardboard, and from April to July, 67,000 pounds of cardboard were collected at five different locations. Probably gonna maybe add some other locations, that'll be up for discussion. And then compost, members have, has requested an update on that, and we'll do that in our next... And then compost, members have, has requested an update on that, and we'll do that at our next meeting. So that's the gist of what we've done.
Thank you, any questions for Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Smith, where can a citizen drop off their cardboard if they want to keep that from going in the landfill and recycle it?
Let's see if I've got the addresses here. Donnie, can you help me with that? Is he here?
Yes, he's madly typing someone. What are the addresses of the cardboard location? Cardboard collection bins? I just thought we should use.
Answer of the year is, I don't have those on me, but I will get them to you. We had talked about doing a, an update on that, and we're actually planning that for the next meeting, since this meeting had so many things on the agenda. But we do have in our schedule to bring you a full update, to show you where all the locations are. We're just now changing some of those as well, so it'd be better to wait until we have those in place and we have all that with KB, so.
Great answer, yeah, I just, on the, one of the 100 businesses that we're touring was KB Recycling. So I just saw all of that. And I thought, I will ask, because I know there are citizens who want to recycle, especially cardboard. And actually, I was at a, a citizens group last week, and they specifically asked about that. So I think it, it is time for us to push out more information about where those collection points are.
Yes, ma'am, and we're glad to have him on that committee. And he's got a lot of information, and we've been in communication with him a lot, even just internal staff communication with him about the strategic locations that we're placing those to get a more effective tonnage of cardboard that's coming in, and citizens to be aware of that. So we'll bring that to you, absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you, sorry for the curve ball.
Appreciate you giving us a notice what you're gonna ask.
Yeah, exactly, well, 67,000 pounds, that's a lot. Okay, any questions off of that, or more comments? Okay, thank you. Item 1F, little 3I, is Convention and Visitors Bureau, Madam, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, Mayor. The Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, we met on August 24th. And we had a presentation on Smith Travel Research, which is no relationship to Councilmember Smith, even though it's spelled the same way. So it's a citywide hotel performance, and it's July 2022 versus July 2021. And year-to-date, 2022 versus 2021, ending July 31st. Now, that's a lot to wrap your mind around. But the overall hotel revenue is still holding at 3.3%, which is above last year. The occupancy is down 9.9% and that's year-over-year, considering that the hotel room inventory is up 7.8%. And this means that we're only down 2.1% in total rooms that are being sold. The average daily rate is still showing growth, and year-over-year, we are up 6.4% with an average daily rate of $93.80. Revenue per available room is down 4.2% for the year. And it took a bigger dip in July, coming in at 13.1% under last July. So we've, even though we've seen a sharp drop over the July 4th holiday that has continued through early August, we are now seeing that it's going to level out and we're hoping to hold the revenue for the remainder of the year. So that's going to be a big challenge within the hotel industry right now. But that's kind of where we are, and that was the highlight of our meeting.
Any questions about the work that the Convention and Visitors Bureau is doing? Cashin's here too, I saw.
We just, we just love to have the tourism still coming in off of I-40 and I-27. Yeah, Cashin was here earlier, she did have to leave, she had another meeting at 3:00, so.
Okay, good.
But any questions, if I can't answer them, I'll refer them to Ms. Storrs.
Okay, thank you very much.
She's, she's sitting there quietly smiling.
Okay, moving on, item 1G, is there anything that you would like to see on a future agenda item or anything reports-wise we need from the city manager, council?
I'd like to put something on the next agenda and the next few agendas. I've received a lot of complaints about the one trash pickup a week rather than two that it used to be. And I'd like to see us to get back to that within the next 90 days. I don't expect it by Friday. But I'd like it on the agenda for the staff to figure out how to accomplish that. The, I've received a lot of complaints. The main complaint I've had is people think they've been paying for two times a week. And so they're not getting what they're paying for. So we need to get back to twice a week. I realize there's, it takes, I'm told, 42 drivers to accomplish two times a week. And we have 21 drivers. So we only have half the number of drivers we need. I understand our new budget would increase pay somewhat. And so I'd hope that the department would really dig into that and figure out how, how we could accomplish that. And it's not the department's problem that they caused, but we just don't have enough people that have the proper driver's license. To complement the department that deals with this, the curb side pickup has been extremely successful. Once we get the public educated to call in and give the address, they come in within 48 hours and pick up the trash. So I just want to get us back to the two times a week.
Okay, so you're asking that that be on the agenda?
Two weeks from now, and each two weeks.
Oh, okay, repeating, all right. Okay, all right.
So that we can get a report, status, what the plan is.
What the progress is, I see now, okay.
If we can accomplish it in a month, then we don't need to keep beating.
Is there any reason, Mr. City Manager, why we couldn't do that?
No, ma'am, not at all. In fact, we've done a number of, taken a large number of steps to address it, that we've taken so far. And then we have a number of things planned going forward. So I'm very optimistic that we will be able to get the staffing necessary to take the steps that Councilmember Smith is, is requesting. I would hope inside the timeframe that he's, he's, inside the challenge he's laid out for us. Now, Donnie might be over there, you know, buckering up a little bit.
Poor Donnie, he's already been on the hot seat a few times today already, but.
This is job, this is job one outside of the council meeting. So talking about it in the council meeting is absolutely no issue, so.
Okay, I don't have an issue with that either, Howard. I actually think it's a great idea to, let's make it, let's put it on the agenda, let's get regular updates on it. And we want to know what the progress is, so I, no problem, I think, then.
I mean, job one among a number of job ones.
Yeah, okay.
I want anybody to think we're disregarding a number of other important things.
So Stephanie, you have that note, that we'll get that on future agendas. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor. If we can have a status update, maybe on mowing between the city and tech stock. It's kind of where we are in wrapping up the, the season for mowing.
Okay.
Because I think we're probably getting close.
Okay, I see that is on the city manager's list. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on and talk about the consent agenda. Let's first discuss, if you don't mind, council, item 2D, which is consideration of resolution number 091322-1. Do you want to leave that on the consent agenda, or you want to roll that to the next council meeting? Does anybody have a concern with leaving it on this agenda?
I don't have a concern with leaving it on the agenda, because all of the backup documentation is there to support the item. And just looking at it, I mean, I don't see any legal issues with that unless our attorney does.
Leslie, you have a comment on that?
Looks like it was an error that was made, from what I can tell, looking at the resolution and then also looking at what the agenda was.
So would your counsel to us be to leave it or to push it?
I'm, I'm good with leaving it.
I think, I think you could do either one.
Okay.
You know, either one you wanted to do.
Are you talking item B or D?
D, about the legislative policy.
Did I hear from this end of the table, leave it?
I'd say leave it.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could ask, is there any time constraints on D as to when you get that legislative agenda turned in? Does it hurt anything to push it two weeks?
I mean, it's our agenda, there's not like a legislative police that say, your homework is late, so it's.
So there's, there's no external time deadlines to get that clerical, that clerical error corrected?
Mayor, if I may, the, the only external deadline would be just to communicate with our legislature as far as setting up those meetings, letting them know the approved policies, because of course they're preparing their bills and their legislative agenda going into the next session. So the sooner the better as far as giving them copies, but we can also send them the draft now as well.
But this will be, this will be like the fourth week that we've pushed it. And so we're, now we're going to, I mean, because we only meet every other week and now we're talking about, you know, like another council meeting.
Okay, why don't we pull that item, we'll add it into our action agenda? And we can have more discussion about it, but we'll pull it off of consent. Is there anything else that needs to come off of consent?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to pull double E and double H off of consent, please.
Okay, so coming off of consent is item D, double E and double H. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion with regard to the consent agenda minus the items D, double E and double H?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items, items 2D, 2EE, 2HH.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve the consent agenda without items 2D, 2EE and 2HH. Anyone, well, actually, it's just consent, so all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes with the five-vote vote. Moving down into our action items. Yeah, which are now in our action. So that's, that's okay. All right, let's talk about then, item 2D. We have a motion with regard to that?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve resolution number 09-13-22-1, which is adopting the policy recommending for inclusion in the 2023-2024 City of Amarillo legislative policies.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve item 2D. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I think the only thing I would advocate for, just because it is a clerical error and it's not spelled out that way, even though we have legal counsel here telling us, could we or would we be willing to direct staff to go ahead and turn in the draft agenda to our legislators so that they could begin discussions and then push this item as a formality to the next meeting?
Anybody else have a comment? Leslie, what I understood was that legally, the agenda meets the requirements that were necessary for posting notice. Is there anything in the agenda, the way it's posted, that you would counsel us to not move forward on that item?
There's not any, it's just basically a clerical error.
Okay, and then I, I think I hear Councilmember Stanley saying, your preference would be push it? Just in an abundance of caution, is that right, Cole?
I, I would, just because there's no deadline that we're not meeting and we still give direction to staff to go ahead and start discussions or, or to send the draft form to the legislators that they can begin to read and understand.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so that item passes with a 4-1 vote. Item 2EE is to consider the award for the demolition of railroad tracks, ties and paving. Do we have a motion with regard to item 2EE?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the award of the demolition of the railroad tracks, ties and paving. Let me just a moment here. Located at Sixth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, Ninth Avenue and the alleyway between Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue to allow for utility updates for the remodel of the new city hall to Howell Sand Company in the amount of $116,300.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 2EE. Any questions, concerns, discussion on that motion?
Mayor, we've got Jerry Danforth, Director of Facilities, to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stanley, I assume you have an explanation, though, just since you were the one to pull it.
Glad to, glad to give an explanation. So the, the reason that I'm asking to pull this is because I will vote not in favor of it, simply because it is tied to the city hall project, which was funded with COs.
Actually, city hall was not funded with COs, funded with COs.
Okay, then remind me again, we had a tax revenue bond and a tax note there, not a CO on that one?
And cash.
And cash, was that general fund excess cash, or was that the ARPA dollars as well?
Yes.
That, it, right, it was revenue recovered through ARPA that landed in general fund, so.
Okay, I appreciate you guys correcting that statement then. So my feeling is the same, in the funding of that project is, is where my disagreement lies, not necessarily in the award for the amount or to who it's being awarded to.
So there's nothing that you would suggest to change this particular item?
No, ma'am, just asking to pull it off to have a consistency of, of voting as I move forward through that process.
Thank you, all of those in favor of the motion then, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those against the motion, please say aye.
No.
Okay, so just.
You want me to say aye or no?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I was trying to clarify it, because the way I asked the question last time, I think it made it confusing. I'm trying to make it more simple, Cole, please forgive me.
Let me say aye.
I know, it feels weird, but that.
Let me ask you.
Under Robert's rules, I should have steered you toward. It, it depends on how the chair calls it. So like, if they call for all of those against the motion, please say aye, then your answer is aye, even though you're against the motion.
Okay.
So it's confusing.
I like it, well, I'm still learning.
And so what I did was, all of those opposed, what I should have said was, please give the same sign. And I didn't say that, and then you answered no, and that was kind of confusing. I thought, well, I'll, I'll say it better next time, so here we are, we're doing this better, we're both learning.
I don't mind it.
But on a no vote, it's whatever the chair calls the sign as.
So you called the sign as all those in favor against, is what you said.
All those against the motion, please say aye.
All right.
We're getting there, but, yes.
Understood, thank you, ma'am.
So that one passes with a 4-1 vote. Thank you. Item 2HH, consider approval and wind down agreement with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated. Do we have a motion with regard to item 2HH?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the wind down agreement with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated for the Photographic Traffic Enforcement Program Services contract with American Traffic Solutions. And, and that is to American Traffic Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $122,910.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve item 2HH. Any questions or discussion about that motion?
I do have, and so if I can get some background on it, I'm, I'm curious in the wind down agreement. So what I understand from the city manager is that these monies are monies that are owed to this entity for their percentage that was contractually obligated for the collections of those red light traffic tickets. Am I understanding that correct, sir?
Yeah, I think the, the best way to say it is, these are monies that will be owed as we process the last few months of the red light camera operation up until the end of August. No additional citations will be issued after, or have been issued, or will be issued after August. But a number were issued in the months preceding the end of, of the deal. August, but a number were issued in the months preceding the end of the deal. These are projected fees that will be owed to them that would, according to how we had been collecting over time, and it was an ever diminishing amount every month. These reflect those projected declines in revenues over the next few months as we process the citations that have been issued already up until the end of August. And so, you see, that's why you see it going from '54 in September to '41 in October to '27 in November. If it's, if we actually recover more money in those months, we still don't pay them any more than what we projected in here. Conversely, if we recover less than we projected in those months, we still owe them this amount in here. We had to come up with a number, and also, what it allows us to do is figure out where the cameras are going, where the poles are going, how we use their technology, or if we use their technology after this point, a number of different legal things that are required to end the contractual agreement with them. So, we've got Donna Knight here to answer any questions, if you have any, that go into too much detail, but I know that Andrew and I can also answer a variety of questions as well. So, between the three of us, we will endeavor to get all the questions answered.
Okay, now, that's helpful and an explanation, I appreciate that. My main concern or question would be, in the original contract, did it not stipulate or lay out any exit strategy as to like what the equipment, who would own it, that they would come back, take it out, repair the median, or whatever the damage would be from?
The, it did not allow us to have the cameras, and we initially wanted the cameras, and those are proprietary equipment, so they would not allow those to stay. It did not speak to who got the poles, and we recycle the poles anytime we take poles down, we wanted to continue doing that. They didn't have an issue with us doing that, because they didn't want to come get them, it'd be more expensive for them to come get them than it will be for us to just take them down and recycle them. The conduit and other things like that will be abandoned in place, or we will pull those if appropriate. But it does lay out all those things in this wind down agreement, and they were not spoken to in this detail in the original contract.
Okay, so it does firm up or finalize, like, as the cameras, the cameras will be removed, and they're the property of that entity, the poles will be left and will become the property of the City of Amarillo.
Yes, and we will take them down and recycle those.
And the only real issue in the contract is we projected, and if it increases, then we just pay the increase based on the percentage of whatever?
No, the, we're going to pay these fees in here as put in. Now, we discussed that with them, and we both agreed that this is an accurate representation of what we project those revenues to be, but if there is more revenue over these three months, we're going to keep that.
Okay.
If there's less, we're going to make it up. Now, we have about a million dollars in the account right now, and that's going to pay for intersection improvements, just like it's been doing throughout the life of this program. So, we're going to be able to pay for three, maybe four intersections of traffic lights and traffic safety devices to be placed at various intersections with the money we have, and then those traffic signal improvements are going to be borne by the general fund at that point.
Okay, no, very good, thank you for the discussion.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Just to clarify, Mr. City Manager, red light cameras are going away. We are taking them down, they are no longer being operated as of what date in the city?
As of the end of August, the red light cameras are no longer operating.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, for any citizen that wondered, what are we talking about here? Red light cameras no longer operating have gone away in the City of Amarillo. Okay, do we have, let's take a vote, then, on that motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, please use the same sign. That passes with the five-oh vote. Okay, moving into item 3A, consideration of ordinance number 7992. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor.
West Texas Gas.
This is the second reading of the West Texas Gas franchise application. They have gone through a unique notification process, we don't get a lot of franchise applications, but it's a notification process that is stipulated in our charter, so we have made the previous presentation on this item. We have representatives from West Texas Gas here, and so if Cody or, if y'all want to come on up, if there's any questions from council, Cody can address those, or Cody, if you would, I don't know your friend, I apologize, I've met, we've met, and I just can't remember her name, I apologize.
Yes, sir, Aaron Bowles, West Texas Gas, so...
Welcome, Aaron.
Thank y'all for having us here, thank you very much.
We've done some due diligence on our part, on the staff part, rather, to look at other cities where multiple gas companies were operating. We've also talked to the City of Lubbock, both the fire department to the city manager. We've done a number of things to validate, or at least to explore what the ins and outs of multiple gas companies operating in your city are, and we can answer questions from the municipal standpoint as well, but if you have any questions for our West Texas Gas representatives or for us, we're glad to help.
Okay, so, Mr. Cowling, thank you for being here, and certainly appreciate you reaching out to me, I think it was back in August, for any questions, and so the city manager and his staff, they have certainly, you know, done the due diligence to vet any questions that I've had, but I do have a few here. So, is there a process to avoid installing dual mains in the public right of way or easement?
Is there a...
Is there a process in place? Do you have a process in place for installing dual mains?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind pulling that microphone up just a little bit, please, sir? Thank you. Perfect, thanks.
Yes, ma'am, I think we do, I mean, it's with the... Yes, ma'am.
Yes, with our, part of our O and M, our operations and maintenance, we have specific guidelines to keep us X amount of feet away from other gas mains and things like that, and electric, and water and sewer. That way, we're not on top of each other, and there's no risk of a line strike.
Now, Councilmember Powell, Mayor Pro Tem, I wanted to, just to what I think you were asking versus what you were answering, you're answering from a regulatory standpoint, there was requirement to keep a certain amount of distance between gas lines. Mayor Pro Tem Powell is asking, is there anything that would prohibit, or would prevent or manage you putting a gas line in an alley where another gas line already exists?
That's what I want, yeah.
Legally, there is, there is nothing that would prohibit that. Once you have a franchise, you have a franchise for the entire city. From a regulatory standpoint, we probably, we don't, I do not believe, have a legal authority to prohibit one company from going into an alley that's already occupied by another company. Now, they, operationally, what we've seen, what we found in talking to different cities, including Lubbock, is that, and while West Texas does have infrastructure in the same alley as Atmos in a couple of different neighborhoods, I think, operationally, it's probably, and I say probably, I'm speaking for y'all, not going to be cost effective to put infrastructure in place where another company already has all the customers and try and, and then try and pick them off.
That is exactly correct.
I can, I can speak on that.
Okay.
I actually live in Lubbock, and I actually do live in a neighborhood that has dual service, and I can tell you, it's not something we want to do ever again, and personally, as a homeowner, I don't really like it, because I have two risers I have to mess with, so it's a, no, to answer your question, no, there's not a, anything stopping that, but it's a practice we're not going to follow anymore. So, if we're in there, you know, we would like to be by ourselves if Atmos is in there, we really don't want to go in and join in the fun with that, so...
But legally, there's no prohibition that we could do, and it would throw us afoul of PUC requirements and potentially of some federal legislation as well, so...
Did you want to ask a question?
I did, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask this question, so the, do you have a practice, or like a policy in place in other areas where, whether there's dual service or not, a lot of times, in being a construction owner, my guys aren't going to necessarily know exactly who to call when they back over that meter in the alley like they do from time to time. Do you have a way to identify or mark all of your equipment that would be different than our Atmos friends?
Uh, yes, so, we have the, like, four-inch markers, line markers, we have a... Yeah, our four-inch markers look completely different from theirs.
And so, I'm not, Cody, I'm not asking like, if you were to, if I called in a line locate, you know, I know your flags are going to give that label.
Yes, sir.
On the meters, like, if I drove from one neighborhood that was an Atmos-served neighborhood to another neighborhood that was a West Texas Gas-served neighborhood, can those meters look different, and if so, by, like, what ways would they look different?
Uh, yes, sir, our, all of our meters, we have our own stickers on them, we also have a phone number to call directly to our hotline. If it's after hours, that way they can get ahold of somebody very quickly, so we can get out there and fix any issues.
Okay, and then on a main line break or something like that, that could go wrong, that would be underground, you know, spewing gas into the, that first responders would respond to?
Yeah, typically, what will happen on that is first responders will call both gas companies, they'll show up, figure out whose it is, and whoever it is whose line got hit, that's, you know, who will fix it right then.
Okay, and what are your policies, or what would we have as an expectation for an emergency response as far as staff and after hours, things like that?
Are you talking like how we would handle it, or phone numbers, or what?
Yeah, just as far as like, do you have the infrastructure to handle anything that could go wrong?
Absolutely, absolutely, we do.
And as far as community partners, do you have partners in the community that you volunteer with, invest in, work with those different organizations?
We do, we, well, sorry, we do, we've, in our, we're headquartered in Midland, and we don't necessarily provide gas facilities in Midland, however, we do in the surrounding areas, and in there, we do try to get with community. I know we were big for a while with Habitat Went to Humanity. I know in Lubbock, I've partnered with Lubbock Christian Schools for, they had a charity, I've partnered with Make-A-Wish Foundation, other organizations like that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us today. Do we have a motion with regard to this item, 3A?
Yes, Mayor, we do, and I just want to, I just want to say to Mr. Cowling that, you know, competition is great, we certainly welcome that, and, you know, look forward to you all building, you know, relationships and partnerships within our community, so thank you for being here today. Yes, Mayor, we do have a motion for this item. I move to adopt ordinance number 7992 to grant West Texas Gas Utility the franchise and rights to use public rights of way to provide retail gas service in the city, and, let me find my notes here. Let me get this right. Okay, granting to, granting to West Texas Utility LLC, a Texas limited liability company with its principal office in the City of Midland, Midland County, Texas, the franchise and rights to conduct in Amarillo the business of acquiring, maintaining, constructing, laying, repairing, removing, replacing, installing, operating and disposing of a gas system for sale, transportation and distribution of natural gas within the municipal boundaries of the city and to the residents and businesses located therein for light, heat, power, and any other purposes, and the right to use the present and future streets, roads, highways, alleys, public ways, and real property in such city and owned or controlled by such city for such purposes, prescribing the terms and conditions to which such franchise and rights are subject, and prescribing the term of such franchise and rights.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Any discussion, comments, questions about the motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say aye. That motion passes with a five-oh vote. Item 3B is, oops, here we go. This agenda's so big, we're all getting buried in it a little bit. Item 3B is consideration of ordinance number 8006. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor, this is the appointment of two additional, or two part-time municipal court judges. We've got Laura Storres, Assistant City Manager, to present the item, or to answer any questions you might have, but we've done this a number of times before, and we're prepared to answer any questions Council may have.
Any questions? Okay, do we have a motion with regard to item 3B?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to adopt ordinance number 8006, appointing Jeffrey Henderson and Cindy Evans as part-time municipal court judges for the remainder of the current judicial term of fiscal year 2021, 2022, and for the full judicial terms of fiscal years 2022 to 2023, and 2023 to 2024.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve ordinance number 8006. Any questions or discussion about that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with the five-oh vote. Item 3C is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 8007. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, I'm going to lay the groundwork for the next nine items, and as we've seen in previous years, this will be Justin's, Justin Opel, Development Customer Service Coordinator, his first time to do this for you, but you've seen it many years before. What we're going to do is present each PID budget, we're going to do one slide for each PID, we're then going to have a conversation with council, or we can do the public hearing, and then we'll take action from council, however you want to do it. So, Justin, if you would take it away with the colonies, we're going to move in a workmanlike way, or in whatever, whatever speed council wants to move, and we'll answer as many questions as you want, we'll take as much time as you want, but we can also move expeditiously if you want. Justin?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and council, I am Justin Opel, Development Customer Service Coordinator. As the city manager just stated, that there are nine PIDs within the city limits of Amarillo. Before we begin, I would just like to quickly thank my staff, Devin Jones, as well as the finance, legal, and purchasing teams who helped us throughout the advisory board process. We have an incredible team supporting the PIDs, and their contributions are truly invaluable to us. And I would also like to give special thanks to Luke Austin and his team at Panhandle Presort Services for helping us get over 3,000 notices mailed out to property owners regarding this public hearing. They were incredibly easy and professional to work with, and I cannot thank Mr. Austin enough. So, in the interest of time, we'll be moving through these fairly quickly. Here is a map of all the budgets, and to begin with the colonies, this is the first reading of ordinance number 8007, adopting the 2022-23 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and living an annual property assessment for the colonies' public improvement district. This ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous vote of the colonies' PID advisory board, who met on July 20th, 2022. It is projected that the total operating and maintenance expense is $1,843,733. Assessments in the colonies' PID are based on the set rate multiplied by each lot's square footage. The board's recommendation is to increase the assessment rate by three cents this year to 13 cents, making the total assessments projected to be $1,312,453. In regards to the five-year service plan, the current assessment revenue is adequate to cover the maintenance costs and debt service payments at this time. As of 10:30 this morning, I had received two inquiries from colonies' residents regarding this public hearing. The first is a letter that has been provided to y'all in your packet, and the second was a phone call simply asking for clarification on the PID process, and I will note that this board did unanimously approve this budget, so, and any questions?
Could you address that correspondence we had from Mr. Isom?
Yes, sir.
Just to give context for anybody who's listening, doesn't have it right in front of them, I'll read it. It says, "Hi, Mr. Opel, I'm a Marine veteran, I'm sorry, I'm a Marine Vietnam Combat Veteran with the Veterans Administration rated 100% disability. Please ask the colonies' Public Improvement District to consider exempting 100% disabled veterans from paying the colonies' PID fee. Affected veterans can show proof of their disability with the Veterans Administration Letter of Disability Benefit. I appreciate your consideration to exempt this fee for all disabled veterans. Thank you, Ron Isom." So, Justin, can you just speak to, and it may be a legal question, as to whether, number one, is that even something legally that the PID board could do?
I can answer that.
I'll refer to Ms. Leslie.
Yeah, actually, they do assessments separate and apart from taxes, and so whatever the tax law requires would not apply to the assessments. So, when you go to the part of the statute that deals with assessments, there is no, they do not have any exemptions at all, and the reason for that is when they move into those areas, they are paying for those amenities in those... those areas, they are paying for those amenities in those areas that are different from the baseline things that you would get when you pay taxes.
So, in order to give that exception, there would, number one, maybe need to be a legislative change to what could be assessed, but number two, perhaps the public policy reason for why that's never been done is because neighbors who purchase property in that neighborhood have advanced notice that they're paying for those amenities, and other neighbors are, every, every neighbor that chooses to live in that neighborhood is paying their fair share of the amenity, am I interpreting what you're saying correctly?
That's correct. Yeah, the state legislature would have to be the one to change that in that statute.
Okay, okay, but I really appreciate this citizen reaching out and asking the question. Mr. Isom, if you're watching and you have more questions, please feel free to reach out to us, and we can continue the dialogue. Thank you, Justin, thank you, Leslie. Anything else, Council, about that Colonies budget? Okay, do we have a motion then?
Mayor, we have a public hearing.
Oh, hearing, thank you, of course, all of those, anyone present, we will now open a public hearing on item 3C, thank you. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3C may do so, have three minutes at the microphone, and may do that now, is there anyone present who wishes to speak on item 3C? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and now entertain a motion. Thank you all.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8007, adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Colonies Public Improvement District, located at the northeast corner of Hillside and Sanci Roads.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the budget for the Colonies PID, all of those, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say the same sign. That passes with a five oh vote. Moving on to agenda item 3D, it's a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 8008, Mr. City Manager.
All right, Justin, take it away.
This is for the Greenways Public Improvement District, as the mayor just mentioned, this is the first reading of ordinance number 8008, adopting the 2022-23 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Greenways Public Improvement District. This ordinance is recommended for approval by a unanimous vote of the Greenways PID Advisory Board, who met on June 9th, 2022. The total operating expenses are projected to be $825,812. Assessments in this PID are calculated by the type of lot each property is, which is determined by the developer. The Board's recommendation is to increase the assessments rates, and you can see on this chart that lots A and D are based off of Lot B's assessment, which was increased by approximately 7% this year. The commercial rate also increased by approximately 7%, so then lots A and D increased 120% after Lot B. The total assessments are $733,657. The current assessment rate, the current assessment revenue is adequate to cover the maintenance costs and debt service payments at this time, and as of 10:30 this morning, I had received two citizen phone calls regarding this public hearing, the first just had general questions regarding the PID, and the second involved an issue with PRAD, but is currently being corrected and is non-issue, so.
Any questions for Justin, Council? Hearing none, thank you, Justin, we will open a public hearing with regard to item 3D, ordinance number 8008. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3D.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8008, within the Greenways Public Improvement District, establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Greenways PID and adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, and so the Greenways is located at the southeast corner of Hillside Road and Coulter Street.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve item 3E. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please, same sign. Okay, it passes with a five oh vote. Item 3E is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 8009, Mr. City Manager.
Just take it away.
This is for the Heritage Hills Public Improvement District, first reading of ordinance number 8009. This ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous vote of the Heritage Hills PID Advisory Board, who met on August 10th, 2022. The total projected expenses are $165,626. Assessments are based on a set rate multiplied by each lot's square footage. The Board recommends no change to the previous year's assessment rate of eight cents per square foot for each lot, bringing the total assessments to $427,364. Regarding the five-year service plan, the current assessment revenue is adequate to cover maintenance costs and debts, and debt service payment at this time. As of 10:30 this morning, we had received two citizen phone calls regarding this public hearing, I returned their phone calls and left voicemails, but am yet to make contact with them, so, it just seems on the voicemails, general inquiries regarding the PID, so.
Okay, questions for Justin? Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on item 3E, ordinance number 8009. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this agenda item may do so at this time, is there anyone present who wants to speak? Seeing no one will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3E.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8009, within the Heritage Hills Public Improvement District, establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Heritage Hills PID and adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, and the Heritage Hills is located at the southeast corner of Sanci and Arden Roads.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3E. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a five oh vote. Item 3F is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 8010, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor, this is the Pinnacle Public Improvement District, Justin, can you give us the item?
This is the first reading of ordinance 8010, the ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous votes of the Pinnacle PID Advisory Board, who met on July 11th, 2022. The total projected expenses are $65,276. The assessments are based on a set rate multiplied by each lot's square footage. The Board's recommendation is to increase the assess, increase the assessment rate by three cents to 10 cents per square foot, bringing the total assessment to $122,594. In regards to the five-year service plan, given the timing of improvements in the future, current assessment revenues are more than adequate to cover the maintenance, as well as establish adequate reserves. As of 10:30 this morning, we had not received any citizen inquiries regarding, regarding this public hearing.
Any questions for Justin? At this time, we will open a public hearing on item 3F for ordinance number 8010. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing and seeing nobody, nobody will close the hearing on this item and entertain an agenda, I'm sorry, no motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8010, adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Pinnacle Public Improvement District, which is located at the northeast corner of Bale Street and West Sundown Lane.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3F. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a five oh vote. Item 3G is ordinance number 8011, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor, this is Point West PID.
First reading of ordinance 811, the ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous vote of the Point West PID Advisory Board, that met on June 23rd, 2022. The total projected expenses are $54,242. The total costs in this PID are divided between property owners according to the percentage of property owned within each, within the PID. The Board recommends no change to the assessments, which will total $52,000. This current assessment revenue is adequate to cover the maintenance costs, as well as maintaining adequate reserves. As of 10:30 this morning, had not received any comment from the public.
Any questions for Justin? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3G for ordinance 8011. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time, is there anyone present who wants to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3G.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8011, adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Point West Public Improvement District, located at the northeast corner of Amarillo Boulevard West and Research Street.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve ordinance number 8011. Any further discussions or questions about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a five oh vote. Item 3H is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 8012, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor, we've got five out of nine done, next up is Quail Creek PID.
Okay, this is the first reading of ordinance number 8012, the ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous vote of the Quail Creek PID Advisory Board, who met on June 21st, 2022. The total expenses are estimated to be $11,474. These are, these assessments are a flat rate of $350 per lot, and the Board recommends no change in the assessment rate from last year. Therefore, the total assessments will total, that was redundant, I apologize, the total assessments are $10,150. The current assessment revenue is adequate to cover all maintenance costs at this time. As of 10:30 this morning, had no inquiries from the public on this.
Questions for Justin? Thank you, Justin, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3H, ordinance number 8012. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against the item may do so at this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing no one will close the public hearing on agenda item 3H and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8012, adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Quail Creek Public Improvement District, located at the intersection of Clear Meadow Circle and Plum Creek Drive.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number 8012. Any discussion or questions about the motion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a five oh vote. Item H is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 8013, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor, next up is Town Square PID, Justin?
This ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous votes of the Town Square PID Advisory Board, who met on June 6th, 2022. The total assessments are estimated to be $159,188. Assessments are based on a set rate multiplied by each lot's square, square footage, and the Board recommends no change from last year's assessment rate, and keeping it at .1111 dollars per square foot, totaling $166,050. Given the time of improvements in the future, current assessment revenues are more than adequate to cover maintenance and establish adequate reserves. As of 10:30 this morning, had not received any citizen inquiries.
Any questions for Justin? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3I, which is ordinance number 8030. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against the item may do so at this time, anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3I.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8013, adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Town Square Public Improvement District, located in the northeast corner of Helium and Hillside Roads.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve ordinance number 8014. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a five oh vote. Moving on to item 3J, ordinance number 8014.
Hi, Mayor, next up is the Tutt Berry Public Improvement District, right in the same area as the Colonies.
Yes, sir. This ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous votes of the Tutt Berry PID Advisory Board, who met on August 9th, 2022. The total expenses are estimated to be $31,659. These assessments are a flat rate of $679 per lot. The Board recommends no change in this assessment rate from last year, and the total assessments will be $16,296. The current assessment revenue is adequate to cover the maintenance costs at this time, and as of 10:30 a.m. this morning, had not received any citizen inquiries.
Any questions for Justin? At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item J, which is ordinance 8014. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time, is there anyone who wishes to speak? We'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8014, adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Tutt Berry Public Improvement District, located at the intersection of Tutt Berry Court and Van Winkle Drive.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve ordinance 3J. Is there any discussion or questions about the motion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That motion passes with a five oh vote. Our last PID budget to approve is item 3K, which is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 8015, Mr. City Manager.
Vineyards, take it away, Justin.
Vineyards PID, the, this ordinance is recommended for approval by unanimous vote of the Vineyards PID Advisory Board, who met on June 24th, 2022. Total expenses are estimated to be $10,567,000. Assessment rates are flat at $50 per lot, the Board recommends no change in the assessment rate from last year, therefore, the total will be $15,000. Given the timing of the improvements in the future, current assessment revenues are more than adequate to cover the maintenance and establish adequate reserves. As of 10:30 this morning, there were no citizen inquiries, and thank you all for your patience during this presentation.
Any questions for Justin about that? Okay, we'll now open a public hearing on this matter, item 3K, ordinance number 8015. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3K.
Yes, Mayor, we, we do have a motion.
It's coming.
Definitely so. I move to adopt ordinance number 8015, adopting the 2022-2023 budget and five-year service plan, along with establishing and levying an annual property assessment for the Vineyards Public Improvement District, located at the northeast corner of West Hastings Avenue and Broadway Drive.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve item 3K, ordinance number 8015. Anyone who has questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a five oh vote. Item 3L is consideration of ordinance number 8016, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor, we've got Victoria Medley, Director of Animal Management Welfare, to, or myself, to answer any questions you might have regarding ordinance modifications to reflect our current expanded rescue, foster, and trap new to release partnerships, or just anything we're doing currently in our operations with the animal management welfare. This will, this will reflect our current operating procedures and postures, so if there's any questions you have, please, please let us know, we'll answer those.
While Victoria might be approaching, do you all have questions for Victoria?
We have any questions.
Yeah.
We have any questions.
Yeah.
There is no presentation, but it really, these are ordinance modifications to reflect how we are operating right now and our current relationships with all of our rescues and our trapneuter release and all the other things that we're doing, fostering, expanded rescues, transports, all the things that we're doing now.
Questions? No? Thank you for making the walk down the aisle. Okay, do we have a motion with regard to item 3L?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve ordinance number 8016, amending the Amarillo Municipal Code, Chapter 8-2, Articles 1, 3, and 5, Sections 8-2-1, 8-2-4, 8-2-12, 8-2-55, and 8-2-81, and Chapter 2-6, Article 2, Section 2-6-27, to reflect the city's expanded rescue, foster, and TNR partnerships.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by council member Sauer to approve ordinance number 8016. Any questions or discussion about the motion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please use the same sign. Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving on to item 3N, consideration of resolution number 091322-10. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We've got a number of attachments inside the packet for this, but we also have Assistant City Manager Floyd Hartman to present the item and answer any questions council might have. Floyd?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. An honor to be here. First off, I want to start with appreciation for Kyle Sneeterjohn and his work on this, throughout this project. We wouldn't have been successful without Kyle's work, and he put a lot of time and effort into the PDP. I also want to thank the committee members that are here or have been here at this meeting. There are some still here, and there's some that spoke earlier in the meeting. But what you have before you is a resolution.
Lloyd, do you mind pulling that mic up just a little closer? Perfect, thank you.
What you have before you is a resolution that will support the creation, create a comprehensive roadmap for growth and sustained development opportunities in Amarillo. The PDP letter is attached with recommendations, and you'll see a lot of Kyle's work in that. You all have had time to review that. I don't want to go into a lot of details and waste a lot of time there, but we also have the consultant Jeff here to answer any questions that you might have. But that resolution, what that will do is give guidance to city staff, to development communities, and to our future committees. I want to point out that the next agenda item, one of the complaints that you heard earlier, in past decades, there were committees that met and nothing was ever done, but you have an agenda item next that is the next step in PDP. So we're proud of that. We've got that there for you. I really don't want to go into a lot of details. You have the resolution in front of you. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Kyle and Jeff are here to answer questions. I want to express, Lloyd expressed his appreciation for you and an opportunity to do this. He's not able to be here today, but I know Lloyd Brown was glad to lead that. So do you have any questions for me?
Do you have a question?
I do, but not necessarily for Floyd, but I'll ask it. And Floyd, you might can answer this, but if not, maybe our consultant. So in the back of this packet, Section 1, the city council adopts all findings and recommendations of the PDP committee in their entirety, more specifically described in the report attached herein.
Yes.
Can we clarify what those recommendations are? The findings, I'm pretty clear on. I see the charts, I see the understand of the identification of the problem. Can we identify what the recommendations of the consulting or the PDP committee are?
They're in the two pages that are attached immediately after that, right prior to the signature page. There's the primary and the secondary recommendations, streets, wastewater, and it describes within those paragraphs each one of those strategies. And then the secondary are on the next page, drainage, streets, wastewater and water. And I can list, I can just read this if I need to, but that's the recommendations moving forward.
Okay. Now, these recommendations are a work in process. Am I correct?
Yes, and let me add to that if I might.
The recommendations aren't a work in progress. Implementing or addressing or evaluating, or implementing the recommendations is the work in progress. So we would hire, whether it's a consultant or staff, to take the steps necessary. So for example, drainage, the city should evaluate base drainage rate to fully find. We will begin the process of hiring a consultant or doing it ourselves to evaluate. So the recommendations themselves are not a work in progress.
And I was going to explain it this way. They work together. This committee worked on multiple meetings over multiple evenings, many hours of work, to put together a comprehensive set of recommendations. So up to this point, they were working on that, and this is their recommendation. This didn't come from city staff, this didn't come from other sources, didn't come from the consultant. These recommendations came from the council, from the committee as a group. This sets that recommendation as a guide for future decisions and discussions with city council and other committees, okay?
Yes, sir.
Does that answer your question?
It does. So if I could dig a little deeper on streets, for example?
Okay.
Because I know the previous council meeting that didn't have to do with tax rate, we were talking about this, and so we were talking a little bit about needing to hire a consultant in order to put together the how for the why.
Yes.
If I'm saying that the right way. So streets, the city should create an enterprise fund for repair and maintenance operations and the city's share of capital growth projects. City should prioritize a list of existing streets that need repair, maintenance, based on condition. This process should develop a 10-year prioritized list for major capital projects. So are we today voting for or against creating or making streets an enterprise fund?
We are, there is no action that makes a fund today. The next agenda item hires the consultant to study and evaluate that and come back to the city council with that recommendation.
So I'm confused.
What that recommendation would be.
Okay. So the...
So this would set, the resolution would set this as a goal, an objective from city staff and the elected officials as a team working with the development community. The next agenda item would be hiring that consultant to do what that street said right there, to evaluate what that would look like, make, give us information, work with another subcommittee, that's what that one would look like. There would be availability for people in the public to participate, and that consultant would also be out engaging the development community and other stakeholders, just like we did the first part of PDP, to come back and put that package together. And city council can get updates as they need to be, and then the ultimate recommendation out of that process would come back to the city council for direction forward. And that would be at the point where the city council, the mayor and the city council would look at us and say, we agree with that study and recommendation, and we want it to go forward, and how that would look at that point. So there's nothing committing to a creation of a fund or a fee. This is setting a guiding document on how those things look from here forward.
Okay.
How we would approach that, how we approach that, and how we bring that to...
Conceptually.
Yes.
So the concept we would be looking for, and then the details in which how we would design that enterprise fund, what parameters it would have, everything from the fee structure or, you know, the consistency there forward, would all be taken care of through the discovery and the implementation, or I guess I shouldn't say implementation, but the recommendation of the consultants at a future...
With an engagement of a committee and the public stakeholders. That's what I would add to what you said.
Exactly.
It's going to have high level of public engagement of the stakeholders in the development process, the public, and whatever committee members. It could be as large as PDP, it could be as small as this mayor and council want that to be. So it would have all the components necessary for a public engagement to know what would be recommended for Amarillo, including looking at other entities, how they did it, what their costs are, what that would mean for Amarillo. And if that final product says no, then we come back up here and say, how do we meet this goal without that piece?
I think it's important to note also that if you approved the next item and move forward with that study, the next time council saw it, it would not be to approve an ordinance creating anything. It would be to have a report from the committee, a report from the consultant, and then guidance to staff on, go ahead and bring us an ordinance to consider. It might include a draft ordinance that you would look at, but it would not be for anything to be approved, adopted, any fund to be created. We're going to move at the pace that council wants to move, and...
And there could be multiple updates to council.
Yeah, yeah, multiple updates throughout the process.
It's not limited to one.
Can you give me your opinion, Mr. Hartman, on is...
Committee members have multiple opportunities to help us, including this one. Yes, they can forward in this one, but Andrew is doing the comprehensive plan update, and that's a component of what PDP is doing and some of the goals and objectives here. So there's the opportunity in the comprehensive plan to serve on a committee. There's opportunity here. There will be other opportunities, such as we get into our design standards for water and sewer utilities and roads. Then obviously, our community consultants, engineers, architects, developers will all have the opportunity. So yes, this committee has the opportunity to bring that forward and participate, but also others that have specific needs, whether it's comprehensive plan, this, or the future ones that we will be bringing forward. You'll see multiple things starting to be created out of this, like review of standard specifications.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
What would be your timeframe or your expectation with the consultant moving forward?
Our goal would be to have that interaction over the remaining of this year and have recommendations, hopefully, we could have recommendations to council early after the first of the year.
Okay.
That would be the goal of setting this. Now, as we get into it, just like with PDP, if we identify things, it'll adjust that timeframe.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Floyd.
Thank you.
At this time, then, do we have a motion with regard to item 3N?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve resolution number 09-13-22-10, adopting the recommendations of the Partnership for Development Progress Strategic Plan Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Dr. Sauer to approve item 3N. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving on to agenda item 3O, which is consideration of the purchase of real estate located at 501 South Grant Street, 509 South Grant Street, and 517 South Grant Street. Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor?
What happened?
Mayor, we need to, 3N.
Yes?
3N.
Oh, we did, sorry. I got my pages in the wrong order.
That's okay.
Tell me, this is a mountain of paperwork. I'm flipping some things forward, thank y'all. I knew I'd done something wrong when all the chittering started. I was like, okay, great. Now we are on 3N. Thank you. Yes, exactly. Okay, item 3N, which is consider the award for professional services agreement for partnership for development progress, Phase 2, street maintenance enterprise study and recommendation. Mr. City Manager?
Since Floyd's right there, let's go ahead and have Floyd step up. Kyle, you can also move forward and answer any questions if appropriate, but this will be the professional services agreement for that next step, as Floyd had previously discussed. So Floyd, do you have anything to add, or do we want to take questions?
Well, this is a contract not to exceed $144,000. It's in addition to the contract that they had to do the first part of PDP. We're recommending Kimberly Horn. Obviously, they went through the selection process, best qualified, and we were very pleased with the outcome of the last contract. Other than that, I think we covered it in the last discussion, unless you have a question.
Nope, I don't think we have any more questions.
Okay.
Okay, so now, I need a motion with regard to, or do we have a motion with regard to awarding this contract on item, agenda item 3N?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to award a professional services agreement for engineering services for Phase 2 of the Partnership for Development Progress Strategic Plan Committee to assist the city with a study and recommendations related to the street maintenance enterprise fund to Kimberly Horn and Associates Incorporated, not to exceed $144,000.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by council member Smith to award the contract on item 3N. Any further questions or discussions about that motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. The motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Okay. Now, item 3O is considering the purchase of real estate located at 501, 509, and 517 South Grant Street. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We've got Assistant City Manager Andrew Freeman to present the, make a very brief presentation, and then answer any questions council might have. Andrew?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to start... There we go. I just wanted to start by highlighting the area there on Grant Street, shown in red. Those are the two buildings and the property to the south of it, and then in yellow is just to identify why we're interested as a city in this property. It is surrounded by Civic Center, Santa Fe Depot, Future City Hall, Future City Hall Parking Lot, and the Parks and Rec Department. And the proposed use in the short term would be, as the Civic Center develops, there are many of these buildings nearer to the Civic Center that would be torn down, which would limit the Civic Center's ability to have storage and operational needs as it continues moving forward. As far as details on the property, it's a little over one acres of land, a little over 42,000 square feet of above-ground warehouse and showroom space. The sales price, including the contract, is for 1.3 million, which comes out to a price per square foot of a little over $30. That's in comparison to some previous real estate transactions that the city had with nearby warehouses that were more in the $50 range, so less than what we've seen in past purchases. And then the seller, for your information, is Burgess Trust Number 2. And then you've got some, an overview of the property there and a couple of recent street view pictures of the recent improvements as far as the street scape goes on the exterior.
Price per square foot on the facility, as it shows there, is $30.88, almost $31. If you just look at it as price per square foot for the dirt, that would be around $28.70. So just for perspective.
Questions for Andrew, council? I know we had a citizen mention that these were, these property appraisal values were above PRAD. Speak to that, Andrew.
Sure, that's a regular comment we receive as far as assessed value that the tax levy is part of, that is typically not the market value when a real estate transaction takes place. Not as similar to residential where they have access to MLS, and it's really apples to apples as far as sales price and tax value. Commercial is a different market, different appraisal practices that they follow based on the use, based on whether it's rentable space, commercial factors involved, so it's not always market value.
And there's a variety, there's a variety of things that go into the difference between appraised value and market value. Andrew talked about the lack of comparables in the commercial market because of not reporting sale prices through something like MLS. The other thing is that on the commercial side, you have businesses that are very, work very aggressively, and most do, to drive down the taxable value of their property by depreciating that property or doing other things that would make that taxable value, that appraised value, I'm sorry, that assessed value lower over time. So commonly, people will say, if you can buy a commercial property for their appraised, for its assessed value, then you need to buy it, and it doesn't matter what the condition is. Usually, that's going to be a third to a quarter of the actual market value.
Yes.
And as you saw with Beth Duke's presentation earlier, as far as the appraised value, I'm sorry, the assessed value downtown versus the market value downtown, it was roughly two and a half times different if you looked at the downtown as an aggregate.
If we pass this item, we'd be authorizing the city manager to execute the contract.
Yes, sir.
And I assume this would be, any liens on the property would be cleared up by the seller.
That is the way the contract's written, correct. By closing, there would be no encumbrances on the property. And we also have an inspection period through the end of this month to look at the property.
And if there are any valid liens... And if there are any valid liens that are not addressed, we would not move, move forward with the project.
Just to be more specific about, we had a citizen who stated they had a mechanic's lien for expenses regarding the property, and just to Howard's point, contractually, seller has to clear those.
Yes.
And procedurally, the city would get a.
Title policy.
A title policy, correct. So, those would show on Schedule C, the title policy would be on the closing statement, all of that would work its way out.
Yes, before closing.
Or any valid liens there. So, really, that's, we're just a willing buyer.
Yeah, it's, it's, the seller is going to address that, and if it's not addressed, then we don't have authorization to move forward.
Okay.
If I could, Mayor, I do know we are a willing buyer, and you guys are looking into this. It won't surprise my council that, that this is not something that I would be encouraged to do, just because of the price per square foot for the land. I think $28 a square foot for land would be highly competitive with any corner on one of our most trafficked streets, so 34th and Bell, for example, you know, for maybe a Tuton Totem or whatnot, but for this cost, downtown Amarillo, I understand we're not the only buyer. Mr. Conklin informed me that, that he's trying to buy the property, and that he wanted to offer the same amount that the city offered. So, so we are one of two potential buyers. Now, I'm not going to validate his offer, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there, I don't know if it's valid or not, but I have been made aware of that. And then I would like to know, with the master plan downtown, Mr. Freeman, can you tell me, would, would what Mr. Conklin proposes to do with the building not be an asset to what's going around it, potentially?
You can see both sides of it. I, I think it's also an asset to protect the city's Civic Center operations, and as far as gross concern there, I think the city in the past has had to deal with being landlocked and trying to purchase properties and not being able to. That's limited the ability to, to do certain things. I think historically, that's been a challenge, which is why it makes sense to try and acquire properties as they become available. As far as a brewery or other businesses, that district's changed a little bit since City Hall's moving over there, it's becoming more civic-oriented than retail or business-oriented, so I don't know if it'll be as walkable or have the night traffic that you'd see if it's okay more to the western portion of downtown, but overall, the, I think the business model he's got would be, be great for downtown. I just don't know if that'd be the ideal location, it could be.
Yes, sir. So, I have a concern for Mr. Conklin and his investment, I also have a concern for my taxpayer, and so I'd like to know if council would be willing to maybe try to bring me along, and, and why should, why are you guys for this at, at such a premium? $1.3 million is a premium for that building on anybody's books, and so, do we, can, can you guys encourage me any way at all, outside of Mr. Conklin, but as to why it's a good deal?
You want to go first on this end of the table?
I would say.
I think Howard had something he wanted to say.
I would say this council voted to move City Hall to Amarillo Hardware Building. Included with purchasing the, the new City Hall building, it included some other buildings that were available for storage. So, I can see we need additional storage near the Civic Center.
Anybody else?
I, I would just say that respectfully, I do not agree with the statement that it, maybe it's your opinion, that we're paying a premium. I think we are a willing buyer, we're paying the asking price, we will get it appraised, and I think it's important for us to control land that is next to other land that the city is, is developing and has a use for. That's the main thing that's driving my, what will be, I think, a vote for this, will be, we have a use for this, we have a need for it. The Civic Center needs more storage, this is a warehouse located right next to the Civic Center, there are very few pieces of property that would check that box. This one is now available to us as a willing buyer, and I think just the proof that there is another buyer willing to pay that same price tells me we're not paying a premium, we're just paying fair market value for it. So, I think it's important, and I think it's a, it's our responsibility to try and meet that need that we have for storage, and I think especially if we increase the size of the Civic Center, and we're going to hopefully do that, then we're going to, that need is going to be even bigger and more pressing. So, for me, this is a good deal, it's an opportunity that came to us, wasn't something we went looking for, and this is a chance to control that land right there and put it to use for more storage for the Civic Center. So, that's my piece on it.
And it has been appraised previously at 1.1 million.
Sorry, how much?
1.1 million, but then there has been, of course, city offers. Give me just a second. April 2022.
So, this year?
This year.
Okay, thank you.
And we did, were approached around that time period, not shortly after that, I think a month or so after that, so it was pretty fresh when it came to the conversation about purchasing it.
So, I think everything's already been said, but just for me, as a business, businessperson, I cannot just look at the now, I have to continue to look towards the future and secure, you know, assets or whatever I can, when I can. And, you know, it's a perfect fit for the city facilities that we have in the surrounding area, so we're going to, we, we do need that storage, and, you know, you're already aware of the situation with the Civic Center to begin with, we, we just don't have the room, the capacity, so. But, but I'm looking at the future, future generations, so.
And I'm, I mean, I do, I speak to what Howard said earlier, that five years ago, when we sat down in these chairs, and, and we had these situations in front of us to try and meet the needs for making the Civic Center competitive again, we were landlocked. You try to go to the north, I think there were 18 different property owners involved, and some of those were deceased property owners who had unopened estates, like you got multiple heirs, and you don't have someone appointed by a court to actually make decisions on those prop, I mean, it, land ownership to the north of the Civic Center is messy and not going to be easily resolved for us to acquire any property there, so.
A barrier of 3rd Street.
And, sorry?
The barrier of 3rd Street made that challenging.
And 3rd Street becomes a barrier, so when you just, you know, then we're bound by railroad track on the east, when you really begin to look at potential properties that we could acquire as additional storage, the, the inventory is very small. So, this, this piece is available, there is another buyer who says he's willing at, at this price we're paying, and I, to me, I, I'm feeling what we felt five years ago, which was, wow, I mean, you can't force somebody to sell their property to you, so, I mean, when we were trying to find a place to go five years ago with City Hall, that was challenging. So, I, I agree that, to me, it feels like this is an opportunity that we should be thinking to the future for.
You know what, there's one other thing we haven't even talked about at all, and that is what is directly across 5th from it, we are building the pavilion there, there is a lot of potential for that piece of property being right across from the pavilion, regardless of any of the other things that are going on, and I, I think it's, it's, it would be very important for the city to have control of that piece of property.
Mayor, if I could, I just have two legal concerns moving forward, so one would be foreclosure. Do we know had the property been foreclosed upon? Has not.
It has not.
Okay. And then the second is, Mr. Conklin did let me know that, that through his dealings, there has been talk or threatened of a, of a lawsuit on his, his part towards the seller, and so I know that in, in our documents, it says no lawsuit, so we're, we're saying we don't know of any lawsuits. So, I'd just like a legal opinion from Ms. City Attorney for the day, and, and knowing that, do we have anything else that we would need to do here today before moving forward with the motion?
There's not anything else that we would need to do on that. As long as, as long as we have everything, we'll do our due diligence, we'll get a title policy, we'll, we'll make sure everything's clear before we actually buy it.
Great, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate your time.
Any other questions for Andrew or Leslie? Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion then with regard to item 3O?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract and other necessary documents for the purchase of multiple buildings and land located at 501 South Grant Street, 509 South Grant Street, and 517 South Grant Street in downtown Amarillo, from Burgess Trust Number 2, in the amount of $1,300,000 plus closing cost and related expenses.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the purchase as outlined in item 3O. Any further questions or discussions about our motion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the motion, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, that passes on a 4-1 vote. Item 3P is to consider the purchase of real estate located at Airport Boulevard and Southeast 3rd Avenue. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we've got Kevin Carter, President and CEO of Amarillo Economic Development Corporation, to present an item which is the purchase of almost 104 acres just south of the airport, or on the south side of the airport. Kevin?
Mayor, council, this, thank you for letting me come today and present this. This is an opportunity that we have to shore up property, sort of what you're doing with the last item, is to shore up property that we have surrounding, I'm going to see if this thing's got a pointer on it. Andrew's just got a pointer on it, it does, it does not? Who's running the mouth?
She can run the mouth.
They did a good job right there, okay. The blue area is what's in, what we're talking about today, but we also have the area that's directly to the left there, Jenny, across the street, right there in that triangle. We have that property, we've already announced a project on a portion of that, the Albers Aerospace Project's going to go on that, and then we're reserving 18 acres for future expansion of Bell. And then you go to the right of the blue, we have control of all of that, that we own currently, and then just to the, to the bottom of that blue, you'll see the railroad tracks there. That's what makes this property very attractive to us. That property, the railroad there is operated by Cathcart, that's a new company, it used to be Progress, or it used to be.
Used to be Quip.
That's right, yeah, that's right. And they have sold that to Cathcart, we've met with executives from Cathcart, they're actually helping us on a project right now, and so we feel very good about the relationship with Cathcart, and they want to see some movement on that. That also makes that property attractive from the fact that it's not on the main Burlington Northern Line, it's on a short line, so it makes it easier for the folks that go in there and do a project to move their rail in and out, where it's not on, where it's not encumbered by BNSF's mainline rules. And so, that property, we're asking you to spend $2 million on 103.84 acres. We did have the property appraised, and it, the appraisal did come back and justify the cost of $2 million. And that would be plus related closing costs and expenses. AEDC Board did approve that project in their last board meeting on a 5-0 vote.
Any questions for Kevin about this project?
That would give us approximately 500 acres in that area, I believe that's right, plus or minus 500 acres.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion with regard to item 3P?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to authorize the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation to execute a contract and all necessary documents for the purchase of approximately 103.84 acres of land located at Airport Boulevard and Southeast 3rd Avenue, from AG Atterbury Testimentary Trust, in the amount of $2 million plus closing cost and all related expenses.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to consider purchase and approval of a purchase for real estate located at Airport Boulevard and Southeast, Southeast 3rd Avenue. Any discussion or questions about the motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. That passes with a 5-0 vote. That brings us to the end of our non-executive session agenda, and I would ask the Assistant City Attorney to read our dismissal language at this time.
Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, the closed session of the city, Amarillo City Council was announced on September 13, 2022, at 4:45 PM, under the following authority, Section 551.087, discuss commercial or financial information received from an existing business or business prospect with which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility, or for incentives the city is willing to extend, or financial information submitted by the same.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned to executive session.